Okay, thank you everybody for joining us this evening. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to invite Pastor Lancaster from the Calvary Baptist Church to come forward for our invocation. Welcome.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love, for your mercy, for your kindness, and for your grace. We thank you that you are the unchanging one, the same yesterday, today, and forever. It's only in you that we live and move and have our being, oh Lord. And as people who are made in your image, Lord, we want to love those who are also made in your image. But we thank you for this gathering of people here tonight. But we ask and we pray that according to your abundant mercy and your steadfast love, that you would bring wisdom into this room tonight. Lord, your scripture says in James 1, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given him." So, Lord, we ask and we pray for your wisdom here tonight. Lord, everyone in this room has their own things going on in their heart, in their mind, and in their homes. And, Lord, we ask and we pray that we would come unto you. Jesus, you say, "Come to me, all who are weary and heavy laden, and I will give you rest." But we ask and we pray that you would give rest, wisdom, discernment, and humility to all the people in here tonight. But we ask and we pray that your name would be glorified in this place. Lord, for everybody who is making decisions, for everybody who is responsible for protecting the well-being of those in this community, Lord. I ask and I pray that you would be with them, that you would enable them, equip them, and empower them to serve well. Lord, we thank you that you are with us, that you will never leave us, and that you will never forsake us. In the midst of this meeting tonight, Lord, would your will be done? Would your name be honored, and would your son be glorified? We thank you that there is no other hope except for the hope that is found in Christ. And, Lord, I pray that we would look to you tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Call the meeting for June 4th, 2025, 2025 to order, and the pledge by Police Chief Kozel. Excuse me, please, Sergeant. I just gave you a promotion.
...
Thank you. Sergeant, you better be careful because they're going to give you a lot more duties tomorrow now. Yeah. Okay, if we could have roll call, please.
Sanders?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Yamagul?
I am here. And next item is consideration of approval of the agenda as submitted.
Some moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carried. I have a couple of presentations to make. Well, we're very proud of you and your band for being at the Memorial Day Parade in Washington, DC. That is quite an honor for our city, for our residents. That's why we called you and wanted to make sure we honored you. I know I used to be part of the band way back when, and so I know what it's all about. But it's my honor to give you this proclamation tonight. Proclamation, "Recognized in Los Banas High School Marching Band and Guard." Whereas the Los Banas High School Band and Guard proudly represented the city of Los Banas in the nation's Memorial Day Parade held in Washington, DC, one of the nation's most prestigious patriotic events. And whereas the Band and Guard was one of only seventeen high school marching bands selected from across the country to perform in this national tribute honoring the service and sacrifice of America's military heroes. And whereas on May 26, 2025, the students of the Los Banas High School Band and Guard marched with pride and excellence along Constitution Avenue, sharing their talent and the school spirit on a national stage. And whereas their dedication, hard work, and musical excellence reflects the strength of our schools, the support of our community, and the deep values of patriotism, teamwork, and respect. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members, the city of Los Banas do hereby recognize and commend the Los Banas High School Band and Guard for their outstanding achievement and honor of their distinguished participation in the 2025 National Memorial Day Parade in Washington, DC. Congratulations. Very proud, very proud of you. Salvador, Jasoneta, is he here? Oh, sorry, okay. Well, you can accept Salvador's, he's a community service officer, police department, in recognition of their outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banas for being named Employee of the Month for May 2025. Yeah, he's good. Thank you all very much. Okay, now we'll go to our public forum members. The public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the city. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to five minutes. And just to let all of you know that when we get to item eight, I will give you opportunity to speak on the mobile food vendor discussion that's going to take place on item eight, so you don't have to come up now. So with that, anyone else that would like to speak to the city council, please come forward. Welcome.
Hello, City Council. My name is Domingo Sandoval. I'm a local business owner, and I want to say thank you for recognizing the band. I know Mrs. Cabazos for past four years. Has been a mentor for my son, has been mentor for a lot of kids, has been doing an awesome job in putting our name over there in Washington, DC. It's something they all need to be proud to believe in Los Banos. And, you know, I want to say thank you for recognizing this, and hopefully in the future, you know, it's got to go somewhere else and be the same, represent Los Banos with, you know, with proud. And thank you.
Thank you. We're very proud of them. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council persons, and city staff. My name is DJ Barcelas. I am a resident of Los Banas for a minute. I am here on behalf of the Los Banas Elks Lodge. We are having a blood drive on Saturday, June 14th, between 10:00 and 2:00. The reason I'm before you saying this is because historically in the summer months, we don't get people to come out and give blood. But it's actually more necessary in the summer because of accidents that take place because we all think we're Evel Knievels at that point. This is not just open to the Los Banas residents. This is open to anybody within, if you have somebody that's in another town, grab them, bring them in. I'm hoping that we are going to have a good turnout. For every pint of blood, you save three lives. So please, before you go out shopping, before you take off with your boat, whatever it is that you have planned on Saturday, the 14th, come see us at 565 E Street. We're across from the ballparks on 7th Street, behind the fairgrounds, next to the VFW. You cannot miss us because there's a big van out there that says "Blood Bank." So, hope to see everybody there. There are some flyers in the back. Thank you so much. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak to council, please come forward. Welcome.
Hello, thank you for the warm welcome. Hello, council members, hello, city staff, hello, mayor. My name is Cassandra Medina Torres, and I am a resident of Los Banos. And I am here representing the company I work for, the Dr. Jennifer M. Jones Foundation. And we provide ECM and CS services. So ECM is anything medical that our clients might need. If it's rails, if it's wheelchairs, if it's connections with a doctor or with a mental health doctor, anything like that, that's what I do. And CS is community support. So we work with a lot of low-income and homeless people, helping them get back on their feet, helping them with budgeting, helping them find lower-income places that they can reside in. And we are trying to do an event. Our event manager, Mr. Mark, asked me to come here today to bring an idea forward about an event, a cleanup event, maybe next month or the month after. And I have a few cards that I would like to, I could possibly leave with Sergeant.
Yes.
And we would like to do a cleanup event at the H Street encampment and bring a bunch of food, waters, and help everybody kind of come as a community on H Street. And we would just show up there because that's what we like to do. We are a hand up to be a hand up. And so we like to show up for the people that we work with. And we have a few clients already in the H Street encampment, and we just want to build a connection with them and bring them food, bring them a little bit of positivity, music, and all that. So I will leave some cards.
Yes.
And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments very much. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. I'm John Fulton, resident in Los Banos, and it's been a long two weeks since I was here to talk to you. In that short period of time, thank you for your quick response. The storm drains that were bicycle hazards that were symmetrical were changed within a week. So I was very impressed with your quick response. Thank you very much. On the same topic as last time, since I've been here in that two-week period, there's been a new California vehicle code revision on the mentioned section. So California Vehicle Code Section 21200 refers to bicycles. 21760 is a revision on the three-foot buffer between the bike lanes, bike paths, and the four different categories of bike ways. So now the manual on uniform traffic control devices that's federal says two to three feet is recommended. California, as of last week, has changed the language but has not changed the intent. They have codified, simplified, clarified that the three-foot buffer must be enforced in California between the bikes and the cars. In Los Banos, we don't have room for that. So the category Class 1 Bike Lanes that are separate, we don't have money for that. So if you're going to have bike lanes in Los Banos, my recommendation is to don't have bike lanes, have bike routes. So your bike route does not need to be white lines. We don't have the space to expand from the present 32 inches to nine feet that would be required to have your five-to-six-foot lane plus your three-foot buffer. We don't have space for that. Whether you change that or not, you still need signs that say the bike at the end of that bike lane, bike path, bike route, bike way, whichever category you're looking at. When that ends, you need, as a minimum, to have a sign that says "This Bike Way Ends." We don't have those, except at one spot on Nantes, north of Vineyard, there's a sign there. If you have a bike lane or a bike route or a bike way, you need to have it going two ways. If you're looking at places like Nantes between Overland and Vineyard, it's only northbound. There's nothing southbound. All the students that live near the Velasco, they can get away from school, but they can't get to school on bicycles. So it doesn't make any sense to have a lane in one direction. We're wasting money painting signs or putting up signs, maintaining signs, painting lanes that are increasing the dangers. Those lines are slippery when it's foggy. We do get fog here. So if that paint gets wet, it becomes a safety hazard for the bicycles. Putting up a sign is necessary and sufficient. It says "Bike Route." In the last two weeks, some areas have been painted bike lanes that are still only 32 inches wide. If you're going to paint a bike lane, you need to have that three-foot buffer as of last week. The manual on your traffic safety devices is federal. It says two feet. California says three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, community. I'm here to introduce myself. My name is Khalid Sanchez. I'm running for city council, District 1. And I also want to invite my fellow neighbors from District 1 to vote. It's going to be a special election on the mail, August 26th. And I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, and public. I'm here to talk to the council and staff about some of the challenges we're encountering in our construction, our home building business. Because of the entitlement plan checks and engineering projects, our company is currently stalled in Los Banos and the lack of entitlement and project plans being approved. We do not have much left to do in Los Banos. We have never been in this situation in recent years. We have had this situation after the market crash in 2007, which we sold the majority of our equipment. We're currently selling equipment that we can't use because of our slowdown. We are trying to move forward with an infill behind the new Save Mart on the Rottandero property that was, has sat vacant for years and is a perfect infill project to move forward with, which will include the widening of the Highway 165 and the connection of Radcliffe Drive and with Deanna Boulevard, and finishing the highway and those two connections that are much needed for those neighborhoods. We would like your support and staff support to move forward so that we can begin those projects. The school district has been meeting with our team and getting school sites fixed out. We have three sites that the school wants to build schools on, and they tell us that they need them urgently. So I have instructed our engineers to draft out locations for those schools to build along with the required infrastructure, sewers, water, and storm drain. I have ideas how to move these along so we can expedite these building of schools. We would like to meet with your appropriate representatives from the city. One of the situations is we do not have a department head in Public Works or the city engineer department. And that is impeding our progress throughout the city and most impacting the construction of schools and homes. We have been building here since 1984. We have never endured delays with annexation and map and plan approvals for construction like we have in the past few years. Dr. Marshall was a very negative, very positive gentleman and is excited about getting schools built. He'd been meeting with our team for two years, hoping he could get a school built or entitled or under construction before he left. It's unfortunate that it has not happened. I'm hopeful that we can work together to move the ball forward in our city. It's disappointing to me that we are having to reduce what we do in this city. We're currently putting land up for sale and moving the money in areas where we can do substantial work outside of our city until things move forward here. That's what we must do. I've never had to do this in over 40 years. It's unfortunate that this city council in this city has inherited from the previous years of action taken by the previous council that has seriously impacted the economics and the jobs in our community. This need to be addressed and rectified ASAP. We now have a satellite office in Merced for the work we do there. We have equipment idled. We must restructure, re-refine our operation. Uncertainty related to the future annexation of map approvals is challenging. Political and regulatory developments that have taken place are adverse to our company that is restricting what we're able to do in this community. I will say this, that this council is probably the most qualified council I have seen here in decades. And Mayor, I want to congratulate you for being elected because what you've done in the past led to a very beautiful city being built. But these last few years, things have decayed substantially. And none of what I say here is reflecting on what current staff or this council has done or not done. It is what it is, and most of it's happened before November 5th, 2024. I want to tell you that the inspection work being done on the work that we are doing currently here is going very smooth, and that is being done by Anna Chavez from, I believe, Public Works. I'm not there, but I get good reports from my staff. So also, I'm hearing good things from my staff about city hall meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Blanche George, and I live in the downtown area. I wanted to piggyback on a previous announcement for this coming Saturday. This coming Saturday is Flag Day. And we as Elks are proud supporters of our flag. At the time that we're going to be doing our blood drive between 10:00 and 2:00 at 565 E Street next to the VFW, we're going to have a presentation of the history of the flags. And so please go ahead, come on down, take a look at the history, the historic history of our American flags, and bring your children and your grandchildren. We'd love to have you there. On the second note, while we're talking about patriotism, I would like to encourage the mayor and the council, as well as the staff, to put forward in your social media about the procedures for the 4th of July fireworks. They do affect individuals, veterans, like myself and others. Just the loud bangs and stuff are very difficult to handle, as well as our animals, right? It's unnecessary for these individuals to break the law and to invoke so much smoke and other things within our city. I know it's tough, but maybe if there is some kind of notification or procedure for individuals to follow and how to report, that might be helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Yeah, I do not see, or, yes, I do see. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Antonio Grimaldo. And I'm here to ask you guys to please call the attention of Marcelino Cortez, Ray Reyna, and Dan Fiallo. Okay, because they're running some program, Big Brother program. I don't know what it is. Okay, I don't even qualify to be on there. Okay, I know it's against drug dealers and this and that, not this. But if it's supposed to help the community, it should be going after drug dealers of today, not drug dealers of the past, okay? But you can't be the problem and the solution because one of them won't meet its full objective, okay? With that being said, I'm not the one selling the drugs. You know, we might look closer into the people with the badge and the Cash App, okay? Because it's all there on the Cash App. All the money goes through the Cash App. And I'm sick and tired of them harassing me day after day after day, Annabelle. And that's just all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward. So I'll go ahead and before I close the public forum, Lucy, are there any emails? That came in today?
I received no comments to be read.
Because what we do is if any emails come into the city leading up to this meeting, we will read them for public record. Okay, so we'll move on to item seven, which is consideration approval of consent agenda. And Lucy, if you could take care of this for me.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two five one seven nine four through two five two zero zero nine in the amount of one million one hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-two cents. Measure P Oversight Committee Financial Report. Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee Financial Report. City Council Resolution Number six nine three six. Amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five budget by increasing appropriations in the Community Center Fee Fund Account two four 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 ten one hundred seven twenty for expenditures in the amount of six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for civil engineering and administrative services for the construction of the Community Center Fence. City Council Resolution Number six nine three seven. Awarding Contract for Publication of Legal Notices, Legal Advertisements for Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six and Authorizing and Directing the Interim City Manager to Execute Agreement with the Westside Express. City Council Resolution Number six nine three eight. Authorizing the Interim City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Los Banos and Quikton Larson Allen LLP to Perform Professional Auditing Services for a Term of Three Years with the Right to Extend for Two Additional Years in the Amounts Not to Exceed Year One, seventy-three thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. Year Two, seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Year Three, seventy-six thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Year Four, seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Year Five, seventy-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. City Council Resolution Number six nine three nine. Authorizing the Interim City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Los Banos and Harshwell and Company LLP to Perform Specialized Auditing Services of Capital Projects in the Amount Not to Exceed forty-five thousand dollars. City Council Resolution Number six nine four zero. Approving and Adopting Final Trap Map, Tract Map Number twenty sixteen oh one East Center Phase Three B and Accompanying Subdivision Improvement Agreement, Pioneer Development Company E. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, before we hear from the council on the consent agenda, Gary, you have a few things to say.
Yes, just one, Mr. Mayor, for tonight. After the agenda was produced and distributed, we came across a legal issue that we wanted to clarify with the vendor before we solidified the contract. So we're still working through that. So that item number F, Council Resolution Number six nine three eight. My apologies, but we're going to have to pull that from the agenda tonight. We'll bring it back to you the next meeting. My apologies.
Okay, so with that, let's see, does council have any questions or comments? Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item seven D for discussion. Just discussion only.
Okay.
Yes, after reading it, it looks like Precision Engineering apparently had submitted a bid when this... I would assume they submitted a bid when we originally had this contract out, or did they?
So Precision Engineering is one of our on-call engineers. And so they were assigned via task order, the design of this project. And this particular bill is part of that task order, but it came in substantially late, significantly late after the project, and that's where this is coming from.
So there's a cost overrun of six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So I would assume the original bid was a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So where was it that they needed the extra money?
They hadn't, they had done most of the engineering the previous fiscal year, and we had only put the construction into this fiscal year. And so we didn't, I didn't anticipate the design fees coming in. And of course, coming in late, I wasn't able to address that as part of the award process or the notice completion process.
So, so did they... In the original bidding, did they have an understanding that they were supposed to do the design?
Yes, and they had bid. I think, I think the task order was for something like seventeen thousand total, and they had billed eleven thousand. I was under the impression that they had completed that work just because they hadn't billed for a while and we were, we were progressing along. This bill hit engineering sometime in May and the notice completion for the project, I think, was back in February. So it had been quite a while since even the project had been finished. So it was frustrating on my end, and I did express that to them, that I need timely bills. But that's where that comes coming from, but it is within their do not exceed point of the task order.
Okay, so it was, that's the point that I was going to get to next is that did we have a do not exceed amount for them?
Yeah, and I'll take responsibility as well.
No, I understand. You know, sometimes these things happen. But perhaps going forward with some of these large projects like that, we need to make sure that in the contract, they understand that they have a final date for billing and that it is not to exceed that. So I just needed to find out how we had that cost overrun. So, but because there's no funding in the budget left for this particular item under the budget item number, account number, I'm sorry, what account is this coming out of?
Yeah, so it's coming out of the Community Center Fee Fund. That's an impact fee that was, that feeds into, towards the community center. That's what the project itself was all paid out of. It's for, obviously, community center projects. And yes, you're exactly right. The line item had hit its available funding limit. We're running it up against the end of the fiscal year, so we weren't able to correct it at, say, mid-year, for example. And so that's where this amendment is coming from in order to pay the bill.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry, any other council members would like to discuss any of the other items on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, if we could have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted with removing of item F.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, removing item F.
Okay, my motion is second and stated. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes happy. Thank you. Move on to item eight, is the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance Update. And with this, we'll go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Susie Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. So this update is to, first off, bring you up to date to what has been done so far, what staff has done so far in our outreach with the mobile food vendors. And then also to receive direction from the council on a proposed update on the ordinance. So there was a stakeholder meeting that was held on May twenty-seventh here in the council chambers. We did have approximately thirty individuals in attendance that were representing about twelve different mobile food vendor businesses. We did receive input on current challenges, and we did also receive suggestions for future improvements. And we also received a request for an urgency ordinance to allow temporary furniture until the ordinance could be revised. The request really focused on just allowing tables and chairs and canopies temporarily that would be moved at the end of the day, and the emergency or urgency would be because of the summer and that it would take a bit of time to have an ordinance implemented as it goes through its process, especially within the zoning code. We did have that request reviewed by our legal counsel, and the findings for an urgency ordinance were not met. But staff is working, and that's both in code enforcement and in planning, working with our current mobile food vendors. And we're working diligently to get an update before the council so we can amend this section, hopefully with direction from the council tonight. Our current ordinance, it breaks down between operating in the public right-of-way and operating in, on private property. So just to give a little bit of the nuts and bolts of our current ordinance, if a mobile food vendor is operating in the public right-of-way, there are rules and regulations. So they're prohibited to operate within three hundred feet of schools, parks, churches or recreation centers. There is a requirement for distance and time restrictions. If you're in a residential zone and you're in that public right-of-way, like an ice cream truck, you have to keep moving every ten minutes. And you're only allowed to operate between nine AM and seven PM. If you're in a commercial zone, you have to move every two hours, and you can only operate between eight AM and nine PM. And if you're in an industrial zone, you can stay for up to eighteen hours. But it's primarily, you can only stay while a nearby business is open. And if you're in a construction zone or a business park, you can only operate Monday through Saturday from eight AM to five PM. So the rules are a little different, though, for private property. And that's primarily what we have for our mobile food vendor permits. So they need to be accessory to primary use. And only in a commercial or industrial zone, they're not allowed as a sole use or as a standalone within a parking lot. So if it's a vacant parking lot, you can't just have a mobile food vendor operating there. It has to be with another use. It has to be accessory. It does prohibit site furniture, which we see as a big challenge of what we received as a big challenge from our stakeholders, the mobile food vendors. It also prohibits freestanding signs. So if a sign is not attached a part of the mobile food truck or trailer, it is not permitted. It only allows one mobile food unit, which is allowed for every one thousand square feet. And it's not to exceed three on the same parcel at the same time. So if you have a large shopping center that's, you know, say, over a thousand square feet, you can have multiple food trucks, but you can't exceed three on the same parcel at the same time. What this does is it prohibits the ability to have like a food truck park or like a grub hub, what we see other communities doing. It really limits you from being able to do that. And then that really only comes into play, though, it's exempt, actually, unless it's in connection with a special event permit. For instance, like the farmer's market has a special event permit, and multiple food trucks can be located under a special event permit. So the challenges that we heard from our mobile food vendors was the inability to use furniture, especially through the extremes of weather, whether it's during the extreme heat in the summer or it's in the rain during the winter. And the need to have tables and chairs as well while folks are waiting or maybe they're just on a quick lunch break and just want a couple of minutes of peace and quiet to be able to eat their lunch. We heard a lot of frustration about that prohibition within the code. We also heard the need for flexibility in how food trucks can be oriented or repositioned on their existing approved site. We also heard concerns over the high cost of permits and those associated fees. Also, the limited signage that's only allowed within the code. And then also a huge frustration with illegal vending. And that seemed to be the, the primary concern was regarding illegal vending, not only with the city, but also within the fringe, just outside of the county. So right outside of city limits. And what we heard from the mobile food vendors is the frustration of, yes, illegal vending, but that the folks that are illegal vending do not have proper health permits, don't have a mobile food vendor permit, aren't leasing property. They're not having to have the same standards that those illegal vendors are performing. So I did want to go over the fees as that previous slide illustrated the frustration, the challenge that was pointed out. So our current fees are broken down by permit. And then it also, the ordinance requires a business license. And those fees were developed, the last update was in two thousand and nineteen. It is based on cost recovery. And so it's essentially, that user fee study determined the staff amount of time, any third-party amount of time, whether it's maybe city attorney or it's cost for publication, for public hearing notices in the newspaper. It requires a public hearing. The permit process through the ordinance requires a public hearing with the planning commission. It requires everyone within a three-hundred-foot radius, and I say everyone as in property owners, within a three-hundred-foot radius of the project site to be notified. And then the public hearing is conducted with the planning commission, which all is costs that the city has to endure and that is then passed on as cost recovery to the mobile food vendor. There's also staff time that's included in the analysis with the staff report that gets presented to the planning commission. And then the commercial business license, that's a fee to issue the business license, which includes inspections and includes the analysis as well to make sure that all of the permits are in order, that the business has, say, a seller's permit and all of the various items that are necessary to make sure that the health, safety and welfare of the business and that our residents are being protected. So then a renewal of a mobile food vendor permit is seventy dollars and ninety-one cents. And then the renewal for a commercial business license is a hundred and thirty-four dollars. So what we're asking for tonight, what staff is asking for and what the next steps would be, is staff is asking that the city council would give direction to draft a comprehensive amendment to the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance. And first, I would like to see if, based on the feedback that we received, if the use of temporary and permanent with a building permit, so this would be for furniture, would be direction that we would receive from the council to include in that update. The use of temporary tables and chairs, I think I see that, I see, kind of, I think, fifty-fifty in my research with various cities. Some cities allow it, some cities do allow for temporary. And there's a very small fraction that do allow with, permanent with a building permit. You know, staff's analysis of that on the permanent, you know, we did receive that feedback from the stakeholders. It could be challenging. We'd need to, you know, receive direction on maybe how the council would want that to look. But that could be challenging in having accessory structures in, say, a shopping center in a, in a parking lot, all standalone. An accessory structure that's really only serving the purpose of the mobile food vendor. And then when that mobile food vendor leaves, now we have a permanent structure. So, you know, just some thoughts of what that would look like. We'd need to analyze that and consider that further. So I'm going to read through these, and then I'll go back through because I would like to hear if I can, if Gary, Interim City Manager, if that's okay, if I can hear one by one, so I can get clear direction. The second is flexibility in allowing minor adjustments. This would allow staff to, maybe it's just orientation, that the truck is maybe facing north and south, and maybe because of the position of the sun, it needs to move east to west. And maybe just that minor modification would allow staff to make that. Reevaluation of permit fees. So you heard on the previous slide, it's based on cost recovery. We can reanalyze that again. Those fees were last updated in twenty nineteen. My assumption is that our fees are probably increased because costs, costs have increased. And then, and I am sure we will soon, with our new finance director, be probably having a user fee update here soon. I'm sure that's on her list of things to do. Next would be enhancing signage. Next would be enhancing signage regulations to at least allow an A-frame sign. A-frame signs are allowed with other brick-and-mortar businesses. It allows, it's temporary. It allows for specials of the day to be posted and is something temporary that the business can take with them at the end of the day. And then also the consideration of a food truck park or a designated vending hub and really in the analysis of what we see and what other communities are doing, that's really the the big set apart from our ordinance, our current ordinance, to what other communities are doing and really forward-thinking. It's a centralized location. Low-Di is doing it, Lathrup is doing it, you know, I can name all the cities that are doing it and doing a great job of it. I think Lathrup's is right off of I-5 and is a big hit. The City of Modesto has their grub hub downtown. Turlock is creating one, in the midst of creating one. So this just seems to be the wave of mobile food vending where you can get a variety of different cuisine all in one location. And that would be a great amenity to provide to our residents that is currently prohibited in our current ordinance. So I will go back, back to furniture and I'd like to hear if I can, and Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and see how you'd like to approach it.
Okay, thank you. Actually, right now, I'd like to hear from the public before we get into it. So anyone that would like to speak on this subject, on anything that was just said before we get into it, we would like, love to hear from you. You have three minutes to speak. Please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all city councils. So pretty much I see you went through all the points that we went through to save the meeting. But my main concern right now is to be able to have an emergency change, to be able to have a shade. Last week on Friday, it was 106, Saturday 107. We are doing the best to protect our customers from the heat. We changed the food truck because that way we get shade, but we do have like good three, three and a half hours of like of sun. So we would really want that. I know the change is going to take more than a month, month and a half probably, for everything to be revised. So we would really want that, to have an emergency change to be able to set up a shade. And it's not going to be permanent, you know, take and set up and take down. And pretty much that's it. She went through all the points.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward. Okay, so this is a direction from the city council to staff, how we're going to handle that. I do agree that last weekend was very hot and that is a concern. So you said your first question to us was what now?
It would be on the use of temporary and permanent furniture. So I'd like to see it from the original direction from the council. It seemed the use of temporary furniture, as this was a council member request from Councilmember Chavez, seemed to be where the direction from the council was going, but I also wanted to see if permanent furniture, as that was a request from the stakeholders, staff. We do have some, I should say, some concern regarding an accessory structure potentially without the mobile food unit and what that would look like. Is it would be a permanent structure that, you know, in just using, we can, you know, target and just that's hypothetical, but to have, say, a carport so that there would be shade for tables and chairs as a standalone, but then the mobile food truck is leaving at the end of the day and now you have a carport over, you know, a certain section of parking.
So that's, that's what you're saying, permanent?
Permanent would have a, it would be a shade structure that would require a building permit. So it would need to be structurally anchored and the building permit would ensure that our winds and our wind zones would be covered to be able to withstand a structure.
So how about like a pop-up tent, something like that? That would not be considered permanent?
That would not be considered permanent. We would still condition a temporary structure like that to have sandbags and to be secured, but at the end of the day, it would be put away, would need to be removed. It couldn't just stay out permanent. I think that also helps as well with, you know, fading and sun damage of canopy material. So at the end of the day, it gets put away, but it does need to be secure so that with winds, various winds, we don't have canopies flying. But if the council should want a permanent, it would require a building permit, which would require a process. But we also would need to think the long term of what that would look like and the impacts on potentially our shopping centers.
Personally, me, I didn't know about permanent. I mean, that's a whole nother, we're building, we're building a restaurant then, you know, instead of a mobile food thing. I don't really have that much of a problem for shade and chairs if they're mobile along with the vendor. This is really, we brought this up 20-some years ago and this is really, the whole dynamics of this whole business has really changed over the last 20, 25 years. It used to be a mobile vending place, you know, you would pull in next to a Tagomi and you'd sell, sell your wares and then you'd move on to the next one and you'd, and things like that. So before I turn it over to the rest of the council, I just want to say when I was in Sacramento at the Senate about four, three, four weeks ago, when I was leaving, there was one whole street, like a downtown, that was set aside at 5:00, I think it was, yeah, I was leaving around 5:30 and it was just got finished, so it probably was set up around 5:00. And the trucks were in the center of the street and that street had a lot of benches along in front of the businesses. There had to be 500 people and there had to be maybe 15 trucks, maybe, maybe a little bit less. And it was really a happening scene. It really looked good. That actually really looked good to me. But anyway, I'll turn it over to the rest of the council. What's your thoughts?
So, so look, so maybe, I care what you're saying. Too much customers are turning to the sun, right? I agree. I, pardon. I was a living thing, I was the top of the truck, every day. I heard saying about the street, but you gotta look at all days. I'm usually going around one time. I want to go back to what Stacy, did you say we couldn't do anything with emergency? We need qualifications or why is that?
So an urgency ordinance requires certain findings to be made and I can have our city attorney talk about what those findings are. It's generally, it has to be, needs to be an urgency, so it would have to be health-related, would really be the the main, safety, I think, is the main concern.
Well, let's be fair, if it's also, if that's not the center, it's in the, but yeah, you stand on ID, I mean, you can't have that. What are the, what are those requirements?
So there has to be an imminent threat to the public health, welfare, and safety. If the urgency ordinance was just limited to maybe appropriate shade facilities during the summer months, that might meet that criteria. It also would require a unanimous vote of this council as opposed to a majority vote and it's only lasts for 45 days.
Can you renew it? That's a little bit harder than.
Well, you have to make the same findings and there are processes where it actually could be extended for another 18 months, but the initial emergency part of it would only be good for 45 days. So I can, the way the question was posed to me originally was, can we do an urgency ordinance to revamp the mobile food vending ordinance and revamping things like furniture and those permit fees, those kinds of things don't meet that. But if it was focused on shade during the summer months, that I could see a connection there in terms of public health, I think that would probably meet that criteria.
Yeah, because we got triple digits this weekend again and right now everybody's going through their acclimation and that's where people feel it really hard when it's getting these first months to get going. Once you get into August, you're already acclimated, but right now you're struggling with the heat.
Yes, I would see any, any other changes or amendments beyond that probably would not meet the criteria. You have to make, the city council, when they're voting on the urgency ordinance, has to make a specific finding that there is some type of threat or immediate danger to the public, public health. I'm thinking 110-degree heat during the middle of the day without shade, having people congregate for 20 minutes or 30 minutes or whatever in the sun probably meets that criteria.
All right, well, hoping it's done in 45 days, hopefully that would buy us enough time and get some shade or something going.
Well, the ordinance is pretty complex and there have been significant changes to, for instance, sidewalk vending since we approved the prior ordinance. And so I don't, it would be very aggressive to have something done in 45 days. First of all, it takes two readings, which is 30 days, once it's approved, and then it doesn't take effect for another 30 days after that. So you're talking about, not likely that you can accomplish that in 45 days. But if you're mainly concerned and if the vendors are mainly concerned about the environmental consequences of people standing in the sun, that could probably be accomplished. And the urgency ordinance takes effect immediately. So if you were to, for instance, adopt it at your next meeting, it would take effect immediately.
How long would it have to be noticed?
Oh, we can do that, we can.
Is 24 hours enough?
No, we would do the public hearing notices and we would be able to.
For the, for the emergency ordinance, that's a public hearing.
It's about an urgency, yes, yes, has to be a public hearing. So if you, if that's the direction you gave staff tonight, perhaps something, Stacy's going to be on vacation if we next morning.
Yes.
But we could, staff could have an urgency ordinance prepared if it was just focused on shade, in my opinion. Anything beyond that that really doesn't go to the public health, I would have an issue And the lady that spoke was mainly concerned about the hot weather and the shade for her customers.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Mayor, I understand the vendors' request for wanting shade for their customers. The one thing that I don't want to lock us into right now is determining the permanency of what we're going to allow in the city as far as shade, as far as, you know, tables, chairs, and things like that. Because one of, one of the issues that I saw is, before this all came up, we had a particular mobile vendor that had a shade structure out there using Home Depot five-gallon pots with cement in it and it really was very unsightly. And at nighttime, the chairs were chained to our public poles. And I don't want to see that kind of stuff happening anymore in our city. So I don't, I don't have a problem with allowing some sort of shade for their customers, but I don't want it to be the permanent thing that we're going to make a decision on right now. To give their customers some ability to have shade while we work through this process, I'm okay with. But if we decide on, you know, certain colors or certain size for, structure for shade, I know that I've seen in my travels that vendor trucks have their own mobile awnings that go out and cover the areas where customers stand and order from them. There's a lot that we need to consider in this as we move forward for something that's going to be a change in permanent. But temporarily, if, if we can allow some sort of covering for them, but with them knowing and understanding that this council may make a decision about what that may look like in the future. So if, you know, if the decision is made and they want to purchase chairs or an umbrella temporarily to put up for their customers, I'm okay with that. But I'm not okay with that being the final decision of what it's going to look like. Because for me, aesthetically, I think we need to up the game in Los Angeles. We don't need to lower the standards. I've seen those type of areas, I've seen them in Fresno where there's a congregate area where mobile vendors can be and there's various types of mobile food that's offered to the public. And so I don't know where we have the land to do that kind of stuff. I don't know if there is a property owner that wants to give up that much parking to have that in their parking lot. And also in regards to orientation of the mobile vendor truck, I think we need to make sure that it's not just the city's decision, but we get the permission from the owner of the property because that orientation may take up more parking spaces or block things that they don't want to have. So I don't feel like we need to have that as a final decision. We need, we need to present to them, you know, what, what the mobile vendor wants as far as heat, you know, north-south is, is almost less heat than it is east-west because you've got that morning sun and then the afternoon sun. But I do, I think we need to engage the property owner to make sure that it's okay with them to have a truck oriented a different way than what they approved of. And also, as we make this decision tonight, I would like to request that, you know, we keep this material and have on our next agenda, it be supplied to the council, what the current ordinance is so we can see it and compare it to what was, what is being asked. Because right now, what we have is what the council, what staff has given to us, but we don't actually have the ordinance so we can look at it and make a comparison. Yeah, this, this is staff report, but it's not the ordinance. The written ordinance itself is what I want to see.
Because I know you just got that.
Yeah, we just got it, yeah. So, you know, it's like, I think we need a little bit of time just to digest that. So I'm not sure how we're going to handle this tonight as far as a decision is concerned, but certainly I'd like a little bit of time to digest that. And, but, you know, we can agree to do something in regards to giving, I don't know if this is something that has to go through an emergency ordinance or what, about temporary shade and chairs for them to sit down. But I don't want to see that as the permanent thing. So again, if they're willing to invest in buying a table or, you know, umbrellas or what have you, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't want it to be understood that this is permanent and this is what you can have out there because the council needs to make a decision on this. And as we move forward in our city, we're trying to raise the standard of living for everybody and that includes your business. And, and I just feel like we need to up our game a bit more in the City of Los Angeles. So I don't have an issue with that. I just don't, I just want it clear and understood that it's not permanent.
Yes, you want it clear, if, if something gets decided on that that's not permanent, that's just temporary while we're working through it. And, but also I think the other thing you're probably talking about is if they invested money into buying, say, a certain setup, but if the file comes out and it's a little bit tweaked and it might not fit anymore, there might be.
Well, I'm saying.
That could be a cost they end up incurring.
Whatever the council decides, because we're trying to beautify our city and we're trying to, you know, raise the standard of everything, of our business, of living, of everything in our city, that these are things that we have to take into consideration. And so if someone chooses to invest in buying some portable chairs, tables, folding tables for their customers to sit down, I know, I have umbrellas in my backyard and they've got vents in them so that the wind can pass through and have a weighted situation at the bottom so it doesn't get taken away, but that could be costly too. So all I'm saying is that whatever decision we come up with here tonight, if it benefits them to be able to have something to keep their customers cool, I'm okay with that. But I'm, I'm not okay with it being the permanent thing until we come up with, as a council, of how we want this stuff designed out. Most of those trucks have a lot of beautiful logos on them and that's advertisement within itself. The sandwich sign, if it's a special of the day or something like that, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as it's in the vending area and it's not on the public side. okay with that, as long as it's in the vending area and it's not on the public sidewalk where it's going to impede people walking by. Because it's a little bit different than downtown, where some of those sandwich signs are closer to the building and those sidewalks are wider. But I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're looking at this totally to make sure that it's, it's safe for everyone, for the public, for the vendors, and for the city of Los Banas, that we are raising the standard as we move forward with all of our businesses. As far as the complaint about the illegal vending, I, I don't know, you know, that's in the county generally, because I've passed by them. I've gone up, like, 59 going to Merced, and there's people like out in the middle of the country vending, selling, you know, their hot food. And, and I'm almost sure that they haven't gotten a license from the county of Merced to vend out there. I haven't particularly noticed about hot vendors in our city. I know that during COVID, we had people going door-to-door trying to sell and vend without a license, and that's illegal. But, you know, it's, 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 it's an issue that I understand for you. It bites into your business, just as other things that happen in our community bite into business of other people that are doing something different, and you have somebody out there doing it illegally. So that's kind of my take on it tonight, is I just want to make sure that it's not permanent, and it gives us an opportunity to get something that's going to be really nice for Los Banas.
Gary.
Hi.
You're next, Evan.
Did you, did you want to go through this, all the points? I thought you just wanted to talk about the furniture beginning, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I was trying to see if we could go one by one, but that's okay. I mean, it's up to the pleasure of the mayor.
So you said there's two different ways, there's commercial, industrial, there's private property, and then there's the commercial and industrial zoning, like, so there's some different ways that the vendors, I assume that they need to make an agreement with whoever's property is on as well.
Yes.
So they're getting a permit from the city and then also permission from the owner there?
Yes, absolutely. It's a part of the application process. And then in addition, the property owner or business needs to give permission to use the laboratory, that's a health code requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it needs to be in writing that they've given permission for them to use.
So as far as the structure stuff goes, I'm fine with the temporary pop-ups, something that can be removed essentially, you know, at the end of the day, whether it needs to be removed every day or not, is, I guess I'd be open to discussion on that. Something that's big enough that needs to be built like a carport, not sure I'm big on that one, just because for the reasons of Councilmember Lewis, I'm not sure when the, you know, if they leave, if they decide to move locations, even if they decide to reposition in the area, it could end up being a real hassle. So I think that, you know, it's called a mobile food vendor ordinance, so I think keeping it mobile is probably not a terrible idea. Flexibility in minor adjustments, I feel like that's a conversation, so long as they're in the area they're permitted for, I feel like that's a conversation they would have with whatever the businesses that they're at, like, that's, that's not really the city's issue. I don't feel like, permit fees, I feel like you're probably right on that one, if we reevaluate, and they're probably going to go up, not down. And so long as it's cost recovery and we're not trying to make money off of businesses that are bringing taxes into the city, then, then I think that's in line with what we should be doing. Signage is, so long as, so long as it's not more than what brick and mortar is allowed, because I know that there's regulations around when brick and mortar can use, like the sandwich boards, and we don't allow the banana signs and all that kind of stuff. So long as we're not letting mobile vendors do more than what a brick and mortar vendor is doing, having the same kind of ordinance, the same rights for signage makes sense to me. And the food truck park, I love that idea. Maybe not something that's permanent all the time, because I don't know if we have a good space for that, but I like the idea of, like, the pop-up kind of stuff, like seeing a line of six food trucks at Pioneer Park on a Friday evening would be cool, and it would get some tax dollars from people stopping to eat, could get people hanging out in the park. Doing the same thing at Henry Miller Plaza would be cool, it's a little coast of downtown, so I'm not sure it would work, but four or five food trucks parked there on a Saturday or Friday night when nothing else is going on might draw some people towards downtown. So I think that might be cool. The other one is that I didn't see a lot of distinction between the food trucks that are parked all day long and the truly mobile food vendors. Because there's like a hot dog guy, there's a guy that sells fruit cut stuff on my street regularly, there's ice cream trucks. Does this ordinance affect them as well, or is that a different one?
No, it absolutely does. So with those folks, it does come down to vending in the public right-of-way or vending on private property. It's really what the code does. So the ice cream truck, anybody that's pushing even a push cart or on a bicycle, that is still mobile food vending, they're just vending from the public right-of-way. And then on the private property, we see the majority of those folks on Pacheco, within commercial centers, and then we also have some on Mercy Springs. The hot dog food vendor, he does have a, a public right-of-way mobile food vendor permit, and he is allowed to move, and that was designed so that he could be near the courthouse. He designed that strategically, but as you can see, he is limited then, he needs to keep moving technically, and he has to be in certain zones.
Would it make sense to have a different kind of permit for the actual mobile cart type ones and the trucks, or would that be, is it not necessary?
Um, I mean, for right now, and what we heard as the challenge is, that didn't seem to be a challenge of the mobile food vendors. It helps us explain staff when we're explaining the rules, and it really, instead of giving them all of the, these are all the rules, and what doesn't apply to them, we're really just able to focus, if you're in the public right-of-way, these are just your rules. If you're on private property, these are your set of rules. So it helps us tailor to their actual needs.
So, great comments. Thank everyone at the council, the dais, and the public for reaching out. If the council so desires and everyone is okay with that, I think staff can come up with a means where we can avoid the urgency ordinance, because it is a complicated process to go through for just one portion of it, while the other portion has to go through the regular process. And so if it's, if it's a path that staff can take, we can work with Stacy and code enforcement to come up with some really brief rules by which we can get through the summer and provide some shade structure to the folks that are out at these mobile vending units to get us by until we bring the full-fledged ordinance forward to you all, if that's okay with you. Won't be a lot, it'll be maybe a couple of tables and chairs and an umbrella of some sort, or something very, very quick and easy to take up or to put up and take down at night, so it will have to come down every night, but we can, I think we can.
Like a pop-up canopy under a certain square footage?
Yeah, we can come up with something that's just not too overbearing for the, whatever area it is that the vendor is serving. And I think we can perhaps, we try not to go down this road, but in this case, I can see the desire, and it is hot out there, and so I think a pop-up would be okay. If that's okay with you all, I think staff could, we can take care of that one, no problem, we can work with the vendors to make that happen while we work through in the background and come up with a more solid ordinance that meets your needs. In regards to the permanent structures that Stacy was talking about, we, just to go a little bit further into the staff, and I think Councilmember Lewis spoke to it very clearly, we want to improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood, so using the Target Shopping Center as an example, we wouldn't really want to see a building permit for a carport-like structure to come up and be used in that area. We'd want something, I envision Mr. Taco has a patio area towards the back, closer to me and ads, and it's got a wood structure with a cover, and it's a shade, and it improves the aesthetics of the area. So when we talk about a permanent structure using a building permit to do that, that's somewhere along the lines that we're talking about. Something that if there's nothing around it, it still looks beautiful and adds aesthetics to the neighborhood.
So would, would that be something that the workaround would be, that the actual, the business that they're leasing space from? Why wouldn't the business that actually owns that property be the one to deal with that? It seems to me that the vendor working with the business owner, for them to get that built on their property would be.
100%, that would be part of the process of the building permit, yeah. We wouldn't, we wouldn't authorize the structure to be built without the property owner's consent and without some building permit process that considers a lot of different subjects like that.
I would just want it to be a far more permanent structure than a carport.
Yes.
And much nicer.
Yes, and that's, I think, that's staff's reluctance to do just a carte blanche, you can have a permanent structure, it can be something like a aluminum carport.
To me, that seems like it's not something that's in the mobile food vendor ordinance, because that's just building code of a business building a structure on their property, I'm not sure why that would be even part of this.
Yeah.
Good point.
All right, so, so when you're saying, you know, do something, if we don't want to go down that road, but how, how long are we talking if we want to get the shade and then table chairs? Do something right now?
Staff can come up with something tomorrow that we can work with the mobile vendors on to accomplish the goal of providing some immediate shade relief to.
Great.
And then Stacy, so, question, so I know you're going on vacation, that's fantastic, we all got to go on vacation, but I just want to know, we don't stop with the city business, right, as far as our planning commission and all that, we got people that keep things moving, so we don't stall anywhere, right? Okay, so you sound a little bit like, oh, you're going on vacation, it's all going to stop, we don't want to stop, got to keep going. It's like rain or leaves and we keep going. Chief Twelv, got to take vacation too.
So I am not in favor of permanent structures, not at all.
Neither am I.
Yeah, it's, that's the property owner's responsibility.
Mobile vendor, keep mobile.
Yeah, exactly. We have to separate those two, totally. Now, if the property owner wants to build a shade structure and they pull their truck up to it, more power to them all, I have no problem with that. But, so anyway, with, with what Gary said, do you have any problem with that? What Gary said about just, Marcus, you're okay? Evan, you're okay? I'm okay, so we'll start that tomorrow. Okay, and so what, I really, I liked the workshop you did, and I think before we get further with this ordinance, we need to continue, as we develop this ordinance, we need to continue to talk to all these vendors and make sure they're part of the, part of it, we have, get everybody's buy-in, no surprises, everybody knows what's happening. We want the best for everybody, we want everybody to be successful, and, and we want to be fair to all businesses. Okay, so everybody fine with, you're fine with everything? Okay, I appreciate everybody that spoke tonight on that item, and we, this is information only, you saw our direction to staff, and we'll move on to item nine. Okay, public hearing, you may challenge the proposed action, this is item nine, proposed action to describe herein court, you may limited to raising those, only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So this public hearing is to receive public comment and consideration of extending a developer agreement for the villages at Stone Creek Four subdivision, Arthur W. and Ann L. Dunkley Marital Property Trust, U T D, and Rosa Lynn M. Simon Revocable Trust, U T D. So with this, we'll go back to Stacy.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So this is just a current development agreement extension, it's an extension of an existing tentative map, which I'm going to get into the details. And so the proposal before you is requesting a second amendment to the villages for development agreement. The first amendment was adopted May 6, 2015, and prior to that, the initial tentative map was adopted in 2005. So this would be the second extension request. The current request, that first amendment expires July 15, 2025, and the request is for another 10-year extension. And really, the purpose behind the request is to continue the finished build-out of the villages for tentative map that was originally adopted in 2005. With the Great Recession and the downturn in the housing market, there were eight years of absolutely no building permits issued within the city of Los Banas, which happened between 2008 to 2013? Is that eight years, many? My math might be a little wrong there, but essentially, it was during that time, we did not issue any building permits, which was at the time that this map was originally activated. And within this development agreement extension, there are no other amendments proposed. So this is the original boundaries of the tentative map, and it's built in various phases, as you can see. Within that tentative map, there was a school site location, which is the south, the south what, excuse me, the northwest corner, it's the southern quadrant of that outlined area, but it's the northwest quadrant of this tentative map. And that was originally designated for a school site, for a middle school site, which got swapped within the Stone Creek area plan for where we see Creekside Junior High located right behind Target, because there was a high-powered gas line, which was not suitable for a school site. So that swap occurred, and that will be then its own tentative map within that area, which is called Villages Nine, but this was the original boundary of the original tentative map. The development agreement, it is a legal binding contract between the city and a project developer. It specifies the terms and the conditions of a proposed development project, and development agreements secure vested rights, and it allows the city to secure certain benefits. So within typically a development agreement, there's going to be special conditions of approval that have been, it's a contract, so they've been agreed upon with the developer, but then it secures development rights to the developer, provides a surety to them that in 20 years, they do have the ability to continue to build. A tentative and a final map, a tentative map is used to create five or more lots, so that's what was originally approved by the planning commission back in 2005. And the tentative map is not recordable, so what gets recorded is in phases, in byte-sized chunks, as the market dictates. So tentative maps have a short lifespan, unless those final maps of those phases get recorded, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm getting into the weeds. And so a subdivider must satisfy the conditions in order for a final map to get recorded or enter into improvement agreement. And after those conditions are satisfied, then a final map is in substantial conformance, and then it can get recorded. So you're not going to put in all the streets and all the infrastructure in for like that big, large area that we saw in the aerial, you're going to take it in byte sizes and record a little bit at a time. So you need your tentative map to stay alive. Your tentative map only, it has a life of 24 months unless an extension's requested, so ultimately, 36 months, three years. What that does is it creates an issue of continuity, and especially in an area here that is half, more than half-developed, in that we wouldn't have continuity in an original plan. This particular villages four is primarily residential, R1, with a planned development overlay. It was originally for 309 single-family residential lots, and that's still what the tentative map is today, there's no changes there on the amount of lots. So the development agreement extension would extend the life of the map for an additional 10 years, so it'd allow the rest of the lots to be built out as the market dictates, with no additional amendments. So not asking for any of those special conditions to be changed, just to allow the map to continue to stay active and alive. No public comment, public hearing notices were published in the Los Banas Enterprise on, excuse me, the West Side Express, and, I'm sorry, that's a, that's a old blast from the past, and the Merced Sunstar on May 23, 2025, and then mailed to the 300-foot radius on May 24, 2025. And the planning commission recommended approval of the extension to the city council on May 14, 2025. So staff is recommending that the city council would waive the first reading of ordinance 1208 and introduce ordinance 1208 by title, approving a second amendment to the development agreement relative to the development known as Villages at Stone Creek Four. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, before we move on with the council, I would like to open up the public hearing, ordinance 1208, approving the second amendment to development agreement relative to the development known as Villages at Stone Creek Four. Like Stacy said, anyone that, did you have any comments from the public at all?
I have not, I have not received any as of.
So it's an extension to what's already there, so anyone, please come forward, you want to speak, you have three minutes. want to speak, you have three minutes. You've got two and a half minutes now. Welcome.
Kathy Ballard, I have a real quick question. You have a tentative map, all the, since they haven't built it out, and it's from 2005, and we extended it another 10 years, so in 2035, what are the fees and all the costs, are those for 2035, or are they based on 2005?
So what we'll do is we'll answer your question after the public hearing. Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward if you want to speak to this. Write that down, Stacy. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished council, my name is Tino Gomes, I've lived in the area here approximately 100 years. I own 11 acres on Ortigalita, directly being impacted by the current construction. I think what's happening is that there are people that are involved or impacted by this development who don't get any consideration. Approximately 600 feet of my property has been damaged, my infrastructure, and that all falls on the construction. Construction people are not landscapers, and they don't pretend to be, and they don't care to be. The other thing is, this road, Ortigalita Road, has been closed, closed in word only. There is no, there is no police that patrol it, obviously, it can't be, shouldn't, doesn't need to be patrolled, but signs are knocked down, cones are knocked down, I eat dust for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and when I go out to remind people that the road is closed, I get cussed out, I've been run down, I thought I needed to report that to the police, and when I tried, I couldn't get past the answering machine, but there's a lot of people who are innocent people who are impacted and have no protection. Our properties are damaged, our lives are impacted by it, and there's just, doesn't seem to be any control over, signs are put up on your property, they push your property around, you're landscaping, and that's all in a part of progress, but we need, we need a little bit more law enforcement somehow on that.
Thank you, we will get Public Works on that right away. Anyone else, please come forward. You're welcome to come forward. Okay, I will close the public hearing, thank you for everyone that spoke, and so we need, looks like we need some water control on the street, we need signs looked at, so we'll do all that, you know, and we'll look at anything, we'll send somebody out there to talk to you about damage to your property, that's unacceptable, I appreciate that, so with that, we'll turn to Kathy's comment.
Yes, so there is a special condition within this specific development agreement that requires the developer to pay the fees that are current at the time that the building permit is applied for. So it is not the 2005 fees, if they pull a building permit in 2035, it's the fees active in 2035. So that's one of the benefits to the city of a development agreement.
Yeah, and usually, we do development agreements for large, large developments, so they have those protections for the city, and it's actually good for the developer too.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, I do think that the concerns on Ortigalita are due to the intersection being improved, because Villages Four, those components on, that are adjacent to Ortigalita have already been built, but I do think that those concerns are, which, right, it would be Public Works to investigate, and I'm sure Joe will look into that, but are due to the intersection being improved currently, just happens to be at the same time.
Yeah, well, that contractor needs to water those streets down, he needs to take care of what's going on. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to the city council, any comments on this before we move forward?
Yes, Mayor, just, I just have a question, a couple of questions. How many times, is there a limited amount of times that a developer can come forward and ask for an extension of this sort?
No, not really. The city has operated with development agreements in the past, and there are a lot of benefits to having these agreements in place, and specifically with this development, especially when you have a very large development, and you want to have a development agreement that keeps all of the development kind of homogeneous with each other. If you didn't extend this tonight, the developer would have to start all over, and they could essentially develop a totally different-looking development, and they could fix their fees. The benefit of this development agreement is the fees continue to go on, as Stacy said, as the building permits are pulled, otherwise, it's the fees that are in place at the time the map is approved. So there's a lot of benefit to these development agreements, and they are typically 20 years, and just depends on how quickly the development occurs, and in this case, I forget the total number of lots, but it was...
309?
Yeah, my question wasn't whether it was beneficial or not, I was just trying to find out legally, under state law, is there a number that can be requested, so there isn't, okay?
The answer's no, yes.
And so the other question that I have is, is there any, I see there's on the photo on page 268, the area that's in yellow, I assume is the development area for this whole project, but there's land outside of that, is that part of what is owned by Stone Creek, Stone Creek, and is that designated to build on, or is that set aside for something else?
Yes, so that is outside of the Villages Four tentative map, that is a separate tentative map, but also approved for residential development.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, any other questions? Okay, so before us, we need a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1208.
Yeah, like, Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to waive the first reading of ordinance 1208 and introduce the ordinance as submitted.
And we have a motion and a second to waive the first reading, and we can do the introduction same time? Second, yeah, okay, so then this, so the motion will be just to waive the first reading, and we have a motion and second, okay, to end your motion with that, Marcus?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and now we need a motion to introduce ordinance number 1208.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance 1208, it's ready by title.
Okay, we have a motion and second, as stated, and with that, we need a roll call vote, because it is an ordinance.
Sanders?
Aye.
Chobbs?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Amabile?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody, that spoke in the public hearing, and now we'll move on to our next public hearing, is to see public comment and consider issuing a levy of proposed annual assessment for the 2025-2026 fiscal year for landscaping and lighting districts number one through seven and nine through 19. With this, we'll go to our Parks and Recreation Director, Joe Ein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, so we are here for the annual presentation on lighting and landscape districts for the annual assessment, this is a presentation that normally we share with Public Works, and I do want to say thank you to Martha Brizot, who put together this packet for us, she's our Wonder Woman in Public Works, and really could not do it without her, so with that, I will get to going. So the background of lighting and landscape districts, I'm sure you have heard of them, but may not know the full background, we have 18 in total, they are special assessment districts, and they are funding things like street lighting, landscape areas, which includes your medians, wall planners, parks, as well as stormwater facilities, sewage, sidewalks, street signs, masonry walls and fences, what you don't see is streets, that's a, that's a big example of what, you might have a, streets would be a big example of something that's not, that gets funding elsewhere, but these districts do support all of those types of amenities. Going into the purpose of them, of course, it's to increase our public and safety and quality of life, we want beautiful areas, we want well-maintained areas, and I think just the best way to sum up these districts is, at the end of the day, we need these spaces to be sustainable as we bring them on, you know, we talk about as we're developing and expanding the city, and that's been the case for a lot of years, we want to make sure that those areas are funding their, their, their share of their impact. Costs are shared proportionally among the property owners who benefit most of the services, and so the way they work is it's not, again, it's 18 different districts, that's 18 different budgets, there's no coming, commingling between them, we submit them all together, obviously, but they, each district has its own account, its own funding source, its own everything, so they very much operate independently from each other in that way. Historically, we have had our challenges with the districts, you know, 2009, 2010, we had 15 of the 18 districts with a negative fund balance, which means, again, there was a negative amount of money available in the reserve, and that's a problem, because who's making up that difference, right? It's most likely going to be general fund. I know when I began six and a half years ago, it was something like five or six districts that were still in negative. This year, we are just, we do just have the one, and that's District 11, and I could talk a little bit more about that as we go, that one has some challenging limitations to it, but really, these should be assets to the city in terms of trying to maintain what we have, again, streetlights, storm drain facilities, landscaping, sidewalks, things like that. It can provide funding for operations maintenance as well as capital, and capital being larger projects, projects over 5,000, things like a playground replacement, or possibly an extended sidewalk replacement, or a storm drain, facilities rehab are pretty common, capital projects. Touched here is a map, and you can see, we have districts all over the place, again, they all operate independently of each other, and the areas that are in white are going to be your general fund locations, typically speaking, those are your older locations in town, obviously, those familiar, you can kind of see the central park there is the downtown area, you can see the older presidential area, but you can see some areas sprinkled throughout the community that are older, there's, let's see what sheet is, it's, in a couple slides, it'll show when the districts were formed, and you can see it, it really began in the late 80s and has continued since then, but again, we want to have these areas really try to sustain themselves. Each year, we do a public hearing as part of this process, that's what we're doing right now, and we do file with the city clerk, we have copies available at the Public Works office, as well as with the city clerk, and we also notify through the newspaper, in this case, the West Side Express, and really, what is being filed is the engineers' reports, as well as everything included with that, the APNs, everything related to increasing this assessment. So your annual assessment structure, you got a big, nice, fat stack of papers, part of your staff report tonight, that's all the engineers' reports for each of these districts, we have to do that each year, and it's pretty extensive, you go through it again, this is why I give so much credit to Martha, because it's a huge undertaking each year to do this, but again, it's been vital for our Public Works and Parks operations to keep these in good shape, but you can see some of the different sections, there's an estimate for the landscape and lighting maintenance improvements, so as you go through the packet, each one is separated by each district, and you can see the proposed line items, so I'll just kind of skip to District One here, you can see things like sidewalk maintenance, water sewage, parks maintenance, storm drain, street tree, technical services, street lights, so you can see all those, those line items associated to that, and then as you go through the packet, you can see things like, again, APN showing the addresses and descriptions of where the properties are within the district. So these are our proposed increases this year, again, these are based off of, we put together a full five-year plan that includes all of our capital, but on an annual base, we look at, basis, we look at all of our operational expenses, the key is to really try to keep the revenue and expenditures at a healthy pace, obviously, if you're spending more than you're taking in, you're going to end up with a problem. The other aspect to it is reserve funds, we do want to try to build those up for things like capital, again, when you put a playground in, it's going to last 15, 20 years, eventually you've got to have a plan to replace that, and you don't want that to impact other funds, you want to be strategic about that, same thing with sidewalks, same thing with your storm facilities, we really want to try to plan those out as best as we can, and in general, try to increase our level of service within those districts, so I know street trees was one thing that I really tried to look at this year, was, you know, in the past, we've really minimally put funding in that, and that's because that's the capacity of those districts, what they were able to fund at the time, but as we've gone, we've definitely tried to address things like that, address things like sidewalk maintenance, sign replacement, all those things that, yeah, I suppose you can go with a faded sign, but it's certainly something that we want to address, fence maintenance, which would include walls, trying to get that, walls painted, repaired, things like that, so, yeah, we want to continue to try to make sure that these districts are covering as much of the expenses that they are able to cover. So this next page is highlighting improvements, this is really our capital projects within the districts, so you, again, you can see kind of the eclectic list of projects, everything from storm station rehab to turf improvements, irrigation pumps, sidewalks, we did also put in quite a bit of ADA improvements, we are in process with our ADA, overall city ADA transition plan, thankfully, we were able to get some of those reports early, and so we tried to incorporate those into this budget, just to try to get ahead of that, that item will be coming to council, but so long as we are aware of some of those issues, we want to try to address those, and as well, again, there's playgrounds, and there's a sound wall repair in District 17, so you can see a various listing of improvements within that, within those districts. And that concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions, but again, would really like to thank Martha and the Public Works team for their help with this, it's very much comes from both of our departments, and yeah, very grateful.
Okay, this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed annual assessment for 25-26 fiscal year for landscaping and lighting districts one through seven, nine through 19, anyone that would like to speak on this item, this assessment, please come forward to the podium, you have three minutes to speak. Welcome.
Hi, Kami Amor, so a couple of questions, I'm in District Four, on, in PDF, Part Two, page 10 of 404, which is Table One, the summary of improvements, and I realize you're doing 25-26, but I'm looking ahead, so in 2028-29, you've got restroom 30,000, 2029 to 2030, you have restroom 375,000, the only restroom I know of in College Greens is the one in the utility bill, or the building that you guys rent out, so I'd like to know what that is, and then, secondly, so out of curiosity, that building that is there, that is for rent, does the maintenance and cost of that come out of District Four assessment? Or is that, is that separate, and the cost that you get for that, the revenue pays for the maintenance of that? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. We'll write down those questions and answer them at the end of the public, public hearing.
John Fulton, again. Joe, on the, I guess it's called Vineyard B, you get a park that's on Vineyard at Ranchwood. There are no bike racks there. You're looking at expanding the parking. And I know with the, a lot of the schools, we have, at the new junior high school, eighty parking spaces total for a thousand students, but you've got about two hundred parking spaces for cars. So what's the relative cost for putting in a bike rack for twenty cars? I'm sorry, for twenty bicycles versus the same space for one car?
Okay, we'll answer that at the end of the public hearing. Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll close the public hearing. And Joe, if you could answer those questions that were posed in the, asked in the public hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. So first, I'll start with Kami's question, the College Greens, District four question. So, yeah, as she referenced, we do a five-year capital plan, again, projecting out all those expenses as far as large construction projects. One of the projects that we're hoping to plan in the future is a restroom at College Greens Park. That would be a restroom that would be publicly available. The thirty thousand is the initial first-year design funding. The following year would be construction. Unfortunately, yeah, restrooms do have quite a big price tag to them. For example, we put in Ag Sports Complex restroom a couple of years back. It was well over four hundred and fifty thousand total. The Seventh Street Noah Jones Ballpark restroom. And I think the restroom itself was more like three fifty at that time, but then there was some concrete work that increased that project. So it does add up pretty quick. And, of course, the things that can lower it is distance for, for connections, sewer, water, et cetera, as well as ADA considerations, like if you need to run a sidewalk to it. Again, that, that project would be several years off. But again, it kind of stems from quite a bit of public interest in having additional restrooms in our parks and trying to mitigate that with, with looking at some of our bigger parks. College Greens, for example, has a, a large open space that gets used for all sorts of activities. It also has volleyball courts, basketball, a new playground, et cetera. As far as the building, the building is there, the, we call the College Greens building. That building is funded maintenance-wise from the general fund as well. The revenue from it goes into the general fund. So say if there's a, a toilet issue on site or something along those lines, we're rehabbing that, that building, that, that space is going into the general fund, and it, and the maintenance comes out of the recreation maintenance budget, same as the Ranchwood building and the community center, which is not in a district. But all, all three of those buildings come out of the recreation, general fund budget. Regarding Mr. Fulton's question for parking, this project's, and, and we'll have a public input process for this particular item here in the summer, but this particular project really stems from the amount of activity at that particular park, and we, we have a lot of parking issues there, specifically along Vineyard Drive. There's limited parking there. So that's where that, that expansion of that parking lot stems from. Regarding bicycle lock, locking systems, I, I think that's absolutely something that we could look at providing at that park. I don't, I think that's a very simple add. In terms of mitigating the general traffic issue there, I, I think that's probably something that we would need to look at further. I, I would tend to say that you're probably still going to get a lot of traffic there. A lot of soccer groups go there for, for, to play, and those parents are typically dropping those kids off, they're driving, et cetera. That being said, I think it's a great idea to try to mitigate that as best as we can, right? We, we want to try to lower that as, as much as we can. And, you know, in some situations, when you have activities going on, you could build a parking garage, and you'd, you'd still have, you know, parking on the street, and you'd have, have that impact. So the more that we can try to mitigate that through those measures, I think is, is, is certainly valid, and we certainly want to make sure that we have enough bicycle locks at, at the park. I don't think that's a, a complicated solution to be able to provide there. So hopefully, that answers this question. If you have any further.
So, Joe, I have a question for you. So there's, you know, the percentages, well, first of all, I'm going to state, the reason why that money comes out of the general fund, not out of the park fund for those buildings, is because the, if you use just the rent on that building at, at Scripps Park for maintenance, that's, that is money that's not consistent, or you can't really rely on it. You know, you could rent it a lot, next year, you don't rent it as much. So we pull those out of the general fund, which then actually makes the assessments lower for those people. So that's the way most cities do it. So, but your assessments are all over the place compared to what you've, you figured out, what was needed at each district. Do you have any idea of the cost maybe for house, the average, you would go up this year?
So, yeah, I actually, in the, on page two ninety and two ninety-one, there is information on that, but I'll, I'll try to walk you through it here, but if, if you are following on two ninety.
I stopped reading at two ninety. Two eighty-nine, I think it was.
So, for example, District one has three assessments. And again, the reason why this, districts have an A, B, and C can be multiple reasons. In this case, A and B are different residential developments within that district that came in at different times. C, in this case, is a commercial rate. And commercial rate is charged at in, in acres, per acre rate, rather, as opposed to a unit. So when you look at like the assessment for the commercial rate, it's a much larger number, but it's only multiplied by the acre. In this case, there's two point five acres, two point five eight acres of commercial in that district. Getting back to the question, which is, what are we talking about for increases? So the LLD one A is at current estimate of one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, thirty-two cents. That's the original district. Nine percent increase increases it by fourteen dollars and sixteen cents per year. B is at a five percent increase. It has a higher rate, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, thirty-two cents, and that increase is twenty-six dollars, fifty-seven cents per year. And as you look through these, you generally see about, depending on, again, the increases, depending on the current rate, you're seeing between like about a fourteen dollar and thirty dollar increase. There are some increases higher than that. For example, LLD three has a forty-seven dollar increase. I do want council to understand that these districts all have different characteristics to them. So District one, for example, has a lot of landscape, right? There's three vineyard basin parks, as well as Ranchwood Park. There's the Stonewood Medians. There's quite a bit within that district. District, like District fifteen is literally one block on Birch Road, Birch Road. So some of these districts don't have parks, some do. Some have a, a large sidewalk section, some don't. Some have decorative lighting, some don't. Things along those lines that can associate to the costs.
One, two, three dollars a month, basically. Okay. Any questions for the council?
I just have one. For, when you have districts that have A, B, C, or multiple charges, because it depends on when the development was built, when a resident gets their tax bill in the mail, it'll say like LLD and then the district number on there. So how will they know which category they fit into?
It should state the assessment name on the tax bill, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. For example...
It does, it says, it'll say like, for me, it'll say, you know, LLD and then the district number. So I know what the district is, but sometimes, like in District one, you have three assessments. So one is commercial, but you may have, well, like District eleven has four assessments. How, how does a resident know which assessment district they're falling into, if it's A, B, C, or D?
I'd have to look at the, the mailer. I'm not sure what information is on there. Each, each A, B, C, whatever, and some districts only have A. Each has a name. For example, on, going back to the PowerPoint, it lists the names here. I know it's super small, but District one, for example, is Ranchwood Estates, which was formed in nineteen eighty-eight, Vineyards, which was formed in nineteen ninety-eight, and then the commercial, which is in this case Dollar General, was formed in two thousand and fifteen. Some of these, the, the very newest one is the, the East Center gated community in the Crest Hills District, District two. That was formed just last year. So I'm not sure, mailer-wise, I'm not sure. I think that's coming from the county, so I'm not sure that we have control over what language is listed in there, if it's not listing the name. I think the best would be, I could definitely provide that information to... Yeah, I mean, Ms. Moreno is also saying that it would be listed on the title of the property of, of your house.
So they would be able to see it in the reported document for, for when that property or that subdivision was, was approved?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Talking about District eleven. I live in District eleven.
Okay, sorry, I did skip over District eleven, and I apologize for that, because I, I meant to go back over that. District eleven is one of two districts that has a maximum increase of five percent each year. Every other district has a maximum increase of ten percent per year. I wasn't here twenty years ago, but my understanding is the assessment rate was set too low in that district. And that district is a beast. It has, it, our largest park, Meadowlands Basin, which is about twenty-three acres. It has decorative lighting throughout. It has two playgrounds at, three parks and another playground. It has restrooms at those locations as well. And, of course, you know, it has lifting of sidewalk issues relating to the tree species and all that that we, we deal with in different areas of the city. And so lifting that district out of that is a challenge, because as things like P G N and water go up, it's, it's hard to keep up the, the expenses, right? No matter what we're doing, no matter what we're trying to reduce, we, we, we end up sinking because the rate at, at the beginning was too low. As we've onboarded new elements of that district, for example, South Point, which is just north of Pacheco High School, or kind of adjacent to Pacheco High School there, we, we tried to set that at, at a, a more accurate level. It has, it has trended positively, much more so in the last five years than, I think, historically speaking. That being said, I think we're looking at probably another two, three years before it's out of a negative fund balance. And even then, I think we have to be very, very conservative with our expenditures in that district. It's, it's hard to say how to mitigate that entirely, because it would require Prop two eighteen to go through and, and all that in order to change the, the rate ability, which I just don't think would be viable.
But it's on track to get into...
It is on track, but it's, it's, it's going to be a long road. And, and there was a time when I was working here, when I first started, that District nineteen was very much in the same boat, and it's, it's positive now. I, I, I had, I think I had probably said the words, I don't think District nineteen will ever be positive, and, and five years later, it, it was. And that's Talbot, that's Home Depot, as well as Talbot Park. And a lot of these districts are formed based off the, the stormwater system, and in this case, Home Depot dumps into the Talbot Basin, similar with Meadowlands neighborhood, into the Meadowlands Basin. So my answer would be that just, we just need to be very conservative, strategic with that particular district. District twelve doesn't have a negative balance, but it's another district that you have to be careful with, because it, it does only allow the five percent increase, which, not to say that you need to increase more than five percent every year, but when you see increases like P G N going up so much, it is, it's, it's a challenge.
Okay. With that, close the public hearing. We've got council's comments. So what we need to do is adopt the resolution as submitted.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt Resolution number six nine one four, as read by title. Am, am I on the right one?
Yes, six nine four one.
What did I say?
One four.
I'm sorry, six nine four one.
Yeah.
As read by title.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for Resolution sixty-nine forty-one, as stated. And with this, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried. Joe? That will go to our next public hearing. It's to evaluate the continuation or repeal of Measure P, Special Transaction Sales and Use Tax in accordance to Ordinance number ten twenty, Chapter twelve, Section three to dash twelve, one point two four of the Los Banos Municipal Code. And this would be Resolution number six nine four two, if the council desires. And with this, we'll go to Finance Director Moreno.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Per Ordinance, Chapter twelve point one, Section three dash twelve point one point two four, tonight's presentation focuses on the mandated public hearing and the review of the continuation of the Los Banos Police Fire Public Safety dash nine one one Special Transaction Sales and Use Tax Measure P, as we know it, at year twenty. Measure P was established in two thousand and four to provide essential funding for public safety operations. This measure has three point nine million in projected revenues for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, proposed expenditures of four point seven million, and therefore using eight hundred thousand from accumulated reserves. This measure supports six police officers, two CSOs, a crime analyst, an admin clerk. We are proposing adding two additional police officers for twenty-five, twenty-six. Also supports fire with two captains, three engineers, three firefighters, a partial admin clerk, and we are also proposing seventy percent of a battalion chief for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It also covers the debt service for the new police station, and will cover the debt service for Fire Station Four. Staff recommends to open the public hearing, receive public comment, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution to ensure the continuation of Measure P as it is a critical public safety funding for the city of Los Banos. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. So with this, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Measure P. Anyone that would like to talk to us about this measure that's, that's been in place for quite a few years? Let's see, it started in two thousand and four, two thousand and four. Anyone would like to speak on this measure, please come forward. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for comments or questions.
Yeah, many. You're saying that you want to add seventy percent for battalion? What does that mean, seventy percent?
So thirty percent will be out of general fund in our proposed budget, seventy percent out of Measure P.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Battalion chiefs, are you talking about?
One, and seventy percent will be funded out, out of Measure P, thirty percent out of the general fund.
I don't know if there's any other questions.
All I can just say is this has been, we worked on this for so many years back then to get, everybody can see the benefits it's, it's, has created for our city from the police station, new Fire Station Number Four that's coming, and all the positions. It's really moved us forward tremendously as a city for public safety, our number one concern. So with that, I'll turn it over to Airport Analyst.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I, I agree with you one hundred percent. This is, since this measure became permanent in our city, I would say, since the onset, it has really helped us hire new police officers and firefighters and other areas of equipment that is needed to, for them to operate. You know, certainly, you would expect your state and federal government to bring taxes down. There are grants out there for them, but it's almost impossible for us to get that money from the federal government a lot of times. So with that being said, we had to create a, a measure in our community, and certainly we need to continue this, to continue the growth, with the growth in our community, to continue both our police and fire department to keep up with the growth in Los Banos. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution number six nine four two, approving the continuation of Measure P, Los Banos Police and Fire Public Safety, nine one one Special Transactions, Sales, and Use Tax.
Here we have a motion and a second, as stated, for Resolution sixty-nine forty-two. Any further questions or comments?
Can I give a third? You can only go second.
You can give a third if you want. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Unanimous. Okay, now we'll go to our next public hearing. And with this, we'll go to receiving public comment and input. And with this, we'll go to receiving public comment and input for our proposed fiscal year budget for 2025, 2026, city budget, and the 25, 26 appropriation limits for our city. This is, actually, we've had, this is our second sort of public meeting we've had about the budget. We had one a few weeks ago at the PD. It was open to the public. And we'll have this one, and we'll have another one at our next meeting when we adopt our budget. So we have transparency and questions are asked. So at this time, I would like to go back to Finance Director Moreno to bring us up to speed before I open the public hearing.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council members and the public. Tonight's presentation on the budget is intended to provide an overview and gather feedback from both the council and the public. No formal decision or votes will be taken at this meeting. Instead, we encourage thoughtful discussion, questions, and comments that will help guide the next steps in the budget process. Public input is a key part of shaping a budget that reflects our community's priorities. We welcome all perspectives and appreciate your engagement. We will not be adopting, as you said, this budget until the 18th. Today, we will review the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2526 and the GAN appropriation. Our agenda will cover an introduction to the budget, an overview of the city's fund structure, a breakdown of key financial elements, and a public hearing where we welcome all comments and questions. A budget serves as the financial plan for our city, outlining anticipated revenues and proposed expenditures. It reflects our priorities, sets spending limits, and adapts throughout the fiscal year based on legislation and operational needs. As I would tell my previous councils in my previous life, this is a living document. It's alive and changing as our needs and our requirements allows. Our city budget is categorized in several funds. We've talked about them here tonight with the L L Ds. The general fund includes Measure H for us, special revenue funds, which are the L L Ds, and the Measure P, C I P funds, enterprise, which are our water, sewer, and garbage disposal, and internal service funds. Each fund plays a specific role in maintaining essential services and infrastructure for our community. Now we get to the good part. The general fund supports core government functions, including police, fire, public works, and administrative services. Key revenue sources include property taxes, sales taxes, and charges for services, while expenditures cover wages, benefits, and operational costs. As you can see in the PowerPoint, property tax composed 7.5 million of our revenues for the general fund. Property tax and lieu or V L F funds are 4.8 million. Sales tax is 6.3. Charges for services, 2.6, and license and permits, 2 million. One of the focuses that we are going to have moving forward with this budget and moving forward with this fiscal year is that sales tax number, the 6.3, we have a lot of leakage, and we're going to be building a campaign to be able to capture more of those tax dollars so they stay in the city of Los Banos. And so you're going to be seeing a lot of promoting local, a lot of promoting online. That's going to increase that number to be able to provide more services for our constituents. Our expenditures for the, this fiscal year are, as you see on the screen, our operating expenditures are going to be 27 million, and it's divided into the different categories. As you can see, police holds a big chunk of the pie. Fire, another big chunk of the pie. But each of these divisions or departments are key for the financial stability and for the sustainability of services, which is one of the key components of what we do. We are in the business of providing services. That's what local government does. If you look at our fiscal year operating expenditures from last year to the proposed budget for this year, actually for the current year, sorry, we're anticipated to be, at the end of this fiscal year, at expenditures for personnel at 14.7 million, supplies and services, 8 million, contingency, 95,000, for a total of 23 million. For the proposed budget, we're expected to be at 17 million for personnel, 9.5 million for supplies and services, 100,000 for contingency, for a total of 27.2 million. And you're going to be able to see in the next slides why and what that is composed of. We are having a switch of what is operating versus one time. So what we decided to do is show you what those one-time costs that are not operating costs as a separate item to be pulled from reserves. So that would be 29,000 for administration, Tyler, our enterprise system for our software, the relocation of the digital sign, a vehicle for housing, I T network switch for police, multi-band mobiles and cameras for Fire Station 1 and 2, improvements to Madison Building, vehicles and F Street Canal Trail overlay under maintenance, which totals $822,000. These are one-time costs. These are not recurring and one-time expenditures. The breakdown of our Measure P summary of expenditures, you can see for police, we have 1.7 million, personnel of that is 1.2, supplies is 171,000, capital outlay of 407. We have dispatch, 252,000, code enforcement, 574,000, fire, 959,000, and recreation, 882,000. This is another measure that was passed to be able to provide all these services to our constituents, to your constituents. Measure P, as we already talked about, is another key element and critical for public safety in our community. We have police being funded for personnel, supplies, capital outlay, and debt service, 2.5 million. Fire, 2.1 million. So it's very important what you just did and how you voted. Our enterprise are also key in terms of how we provide services for water, wastewater, airport, and solid waste. For water, we have personnel of 3 million, supplies and services, 3.9 million, capital outlay, 5.6 million, and 100,000 contingency, for a total budget of 12 million. Wastewater, we have 3 million in personnel, 3.4 million in supplies, 11 million in capital outlay. For the airport, we have 23,000 in personnel, supplies of 450,000, capital outlay, 340,000. For solid waste, we have 2.5 million in personnel, supplies and services, 11.9, and we're going to go over what those costs are for, this item has to do with the closure of the landfill. And so we'll go over that in just a bit. Capital outlay of 657,000 and contingency of 100,000. Internal service funds are key for our city to be able to provide to all the departments the different internal services that we provide in terms of fleet, facilities, and I T. The way they work is you build them and then you build them out to all the different areas of the city. Personnel for fleet is 545,000, supplies for service and services are 831,000, capital outlay, 85,000. For facilities, 591,000 for personnel, 367,000 for supplies and service, and then 387,000 for capital outlay. For our I T department, it's 194,000 for personnel, 282,000 for supplies, and capital outlay of 60,000. This area was pretty, went through a real good cleanup. We wanted to see exactly what we were going to be spending for, actually, all of our, all of our different funding sources, and all of our expenditures went through a good cleanup, making sure that we're able to deliver and we're able to execute what we're putting in the budget. That's going to be key moving forward. It's going to be something we're expecting. It's going to be something our interim city manager and our future city manager is going to be requiring of all of our departments. If we're budgeting, they need to execute, they need to deliver. Capital projects, so here is where the capital project dollars are going. General fund is going to be spending 822,000. That ties back to that one-time cost. Measure H is 797,000. Other funds, 20 million. Our enterprise funds or business funds, 18 million, and internal service funds are 532,000. I'm going to highlight some of the projects within those numbers. For the general fund, we're, as I spoke earlier, we're relocating the digital sign. We're providing a housing vehicle, maintaining a dump or for maintenance, a dump truck. Measure H, we're doing the solar lighting project, the Axion contract, license plate readers. For business-type funds, we have Mercy Springs Water Line, $4 million. We have a generator for 250,000. We have Final Kilometer Project for wastewater, 4.5 million, triple-flail mower, 275,000, recharge detention basin, 3 million, street sweeper, 450,000. Other funds, special revenues and capital funds, we have the E O C Fire Station of 2 million, City Hall Annex Building, 1.7 million, pavement, F Street Yard, 391,000, Intersection Pioneer and Ortiga Lita, 5.3 million, street and road improvements. Our internal service funds, we have warehouse for fleet or parts warehouse for fleet, 75,000. We have 222,000 for H V A C units, and then renovation to facility shop, 80,000. City priorities. So what we did in that workshop where we met, we discussed what your city, your, as the elected official city priorities were, right? And so we really focused this budget on that, and we wanted to show you how it all relates to the priorities that you set. And you set priority number one, public safety and homelessness. We're adding personnel, police officers, two, a police sergeant, a record supervisor, a homeless outreach coordinator, a battalion, actually, two battalion chiefs funded, three authorized, assigned funds of 500,000, type 6 firefighting apparatus. For code enforcement, we're increasing funding for the spay and neuter program, and we're adding funding for receiverships. We talked about that. We want to make our city beautiful. We want to take care of some of those properties that are not being taken care of by their homeowners. Parks and recreation, we're adding personnel, a recreation coordinator, too, and we're assigning funds. We're going to be talking about that shortly. All the numbers that you see for assigned and committed, we're going to talk about in the next slides. Other, added personnel, custodian and a maintenance worker, actually, maintenance, two maintenance workers. Infrastructure, we're also adding a city engineer, a utility maintenance worker, three, a utility maintenance worker, two, utility maintenance worker, one, an environmental control specialist, three. And as I said, this is a living document. So we're adapting to changes. So now that Joe's in charge of public works, we're having discussions about that inspector, and maybe that the engineering manager works better for him, which will affect what we present today by about 10,000 to the general fund, overall increase of 30,000. But we're looking at what the needs are of the individual departments and talking to those in charge to make sure that we're putting the positions that are going to benefit the overall organization and the overall city and that are specific to what their needs are. You guys said we, oh, sorry, almost skipped that. We have a major capital projects to infrastructure, and we have assigned funds in streets and roads of 2.5 million. You also said we needed to attract jobs and businesses. We're adding personnel, we're adding an administrative coordinator to the Economic Community and Economic Development Department, and we're assigning $250,000. Fiscal stability, you said was really important to you. And so we've assigned fund, your fund balance reserve policy of 30%, which is 8.7 million. We put it in assigned, so that way it doesn't get touched. Assigned funds for CalPERS, making sure that those liabilities are managed, that if we have to set up a trust, we have what to, how, we have some funds to set it up. If we need to pay down our liability, that we have a little bit to be able to pay that down. And then we also, today, we approved the specialized audit in our consent calendar to look at those projects, making sure that they are procured correctly, making sure that they're spent correctly, making sure that there's nothing out of the ordinary that, that we need to increase internal controls. We also have the appropriation limitation that we, that we did the public notice on. And that says that we can't tax our, or your constituents, we can't tax the citizens of Los Banos more than 137 million, right?
That's all?
We're, we're taxing them 30, 30 million.
Yeah.
That's it. So this is something we have to do per the state. Our limit is 137. We're taxing them 30.
Yeah.
And that'll be in the next.
Yeah, that's always so off. Every year it's so off. It's almost like.
And it increases every year per capita and for the change of, of personal income.
Yeah.
But we're well within the limitation. So my recommended actions for you are to open the public hearing, accept comments, questions, provide updates and changes to staff, to staff to make for the next meeting, close the public hearing. We're going to bring this back to council on the 18th with those changes that you present to us for adoption. Like I said, we're not approving anything today. We're presenting, answering questions, and I'll pass it on to Gary if he wants to say something.
Okay, well, go ahead right now and open the public hearing. So this is our budget for 2025, 2026. Like I said, this is informational direction for the council. If you have any ideas that you want us to consider, this is a time to tell us. We want this open. As you can see, it's very important. This council wanted a balanced budget with surpluses and reserves to be able to continue the services that we provide our citizens even in lean times. And we got that. That's very important to all of us. It's very important. So with that, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to us on our budget, please come forward. We welcome you. Have lunch.
Hi. First, thank you. Thank you. I do want to just mention, yeah, I just turned off my phone. Excuse me. I do have a small list of, of questions and I'll just submit that to Lucy in the close future, just so all of you can digest and not necessarily answer them, but just pushing forward, progressing. But one of the things I'd like to ask is that with part of the funds, the small funds, it's really crucial that we, we engage in the community to promote responsible pet ownership and whether or not it's a campaign. Because what that's going to do is it's going to reduce the amount of homelessness of, of pets. And, but I just don't want to spoil any kind of joy. I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Blanche. Anyone else would like to speak on the budget, please come forward. You can also submit your ideas to, through our website online, for the people at home that are watching us. You can submit if you don't understand something, we want to explain it to you. It's a lot of talk right there that's sort of hard to understand. But what it boils down to is public safety is number one. It's always going to be, at least for us up here, that's number one, providing services. We don't, we need to spend the money that comes in so we can provide services to the public. That's, you know, hanging on to all the money for another day is not the right thing to do. And make sure all our departments are working correctly and efficiently from the top to the bottom. And so with this budget, I'm very, very happy with the reserve and with the surplus. We're very happy with both of those. And what Blanche talking about, we increased the budget for spade and neutering that she's has mentioned maybe once or twice over the last year.
First, that's very good.
Yeah, yeah. But those are, those are very important things. Everybody has something that's due to their heart and we respect that and we want to hear it. And it's up to us to decide how we handle that, you know, do we spend it here, spend it there? But this is a good budget. We're going to fix a lot of things with this budget and I'm really happy. So I don't want to, if there's anybody else who wants to speak on the budget, please come forward at this time. I don't want to take too much time talking. Please come forward.
Just a quick question. There was a lot of talk about the Colorado ballpark? And I see in the budget, there isn't much in, it's not in the capital projects and I don't, I don't really see it showing up in any of the, the recreation budget. So is that something that's going to be tabled later or dealt with in a different way or?
Yes, I will. We'll talk about that just in a minute. That's a very good question. Good catch. Anyone else would like to speak to us, please come forward. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and let's go ahead and talk about Colorado first.
Yeah, so Colorado is in the budget. It's a park development fund. It's, we have requested just five hundred thousand for this fiscal year. Primary reason being that we anticipated to be mostly a design during this year as far as engineering goes, all that. In terms of if, if for some reason we were escalating that process and we needed, yeah, I feel comfortable bringing that item to council for review, whether that be a mid-year or an amendment. But at this stage, we're focused on designing it and any, any further testing that we may need to do out there for those purposes.
So you still have yet to come back to us for the final, what we want, because we have, the first design, I don't know if you watched past meetings, but the council wasn't, I think most of us weren't real in favor of splash pad at the Colorado ballpark because it was going to take out the skate park and some things like that we didn't like. And I think there's a more centralized area, it might be personally, that that could be put in. So that has to be determined. There'll be meetings on that while we do this design this next fiscal year, which starts in a little over three weeks, you know? So we'll be discussing that. Everything will be in the public. Everybody will see everything that's happening and understand it. So you had something to say?
Yeah, so we had a couple of slides for whatever reason. I think that power outage that we had, Minnie, messed up our slide deck because there's a couple of slides that we recovered.
There's some type of spirit that didn't allow the slides to come up. So I would like to discuss the fund balance slide that's above. And, and this goes into the fiscal sustainability and, and going into explaining what our fund balance is. Our unallocated fund balance at the end of 2024, fiscal year end 2024, was seven point six million. As of, or we're estimating in, on thirty, on June 30th, 2025, to be at eleven point eight million. And so with that, our operating budget for the fiscal year 25, 26, has a surplus of about twenty-seven thousand. So we're pretty close to breaking even. And then the one-time expenditures are eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. I've talked about those quite a bit. So our unallocated fund balance is still eleven million at the end of June 2026. So that's going to be something that we work through and prioritize for the council to make decisions on, on where this money needs to be spent. The other portion of our fund balance is designated by our city manager. It's, it's assigned funds. And that is, we have twenty-one million that included Measure H in 2024. We have since split it. And so we have fourteen million, four hundred thousand in assigned for this year, separated for Measure H. We have, or the city manager has, is making the recommendation to use two hundred and fifty thousand for economic development, two point five million for street and roads, five hundred thousand to homeless, a million to park development, and CalPERS, the two million. And this is where we have the thirty percent reserve policy, the eight point seven million. And so this, this is not approving appropriation. This is setting it aside for a specific use and that will come to the council for approval. But at least this will give staff the ability to come to council for a specific purpose if you approve the recommendations of the city manager. In the Measure H fund balance, as I, as I spoke to Measure P, Measure H is also, has reserves of seven point four million. And that's going down because we're using some of those reserves. And that'll be six point nine million in June of 2026. We also have committed. This can only be changed by council. This was committed by council, it can only get changed by council. And it's the eight point eight million for city hall and police annex renovation. So this is your total fund balance in the general fund. It's very healthy. It's very, it's, it's very, you're in a good place. But we do need to provide services to the community and we're going to be looking at that unallocated so that you can provide those services to the community in the coming years. We also missed another slide. Let me see if I can get it up. Slide 11, that one. And so this one was the positions added. We wanted to share with council that we're adding nineteen positions, funding eighteen. And it has all the categories of funding for the different priorities. And so in that slide that we combined those priorities, these are the positions that, that staff is recommending that, that we add. So for the public to be able to see where they're getting funded, this is, we're, we're going to be providing services to the community that they deserve moving forward.
I appreciate that update. With this slide in particular, it's, we want to highlight the fact that we're adding eighteen new positions to our existing staff. And that's a enormous help for all of the departments because it helps them spread out some of the things that they're already doing. They've got X number of staff. I can sit here and tell you for the last three or four months that I've been here, we are lean and mean and the people up here are just the tip of the spear and they work hard. And the people that work for them work hard. And we need to start to execute on our game plan a little bit better. And these positions start to free up these folks here at the dais and their middle management staff to be able to do some more of the project-based things that move this city forward while they delegate some of these other duties away. So this is a, this is a huge step forward as far as I'm concerned. And we really tried to listen to each of the departments and be responsive to each of them in a different way. And I'll just, I'm going to take the top one there, the community and economic development administrative coordinator. One of your priorities was attracting businesses and jobs. Stacy's desk is loaded with stuff every day that's the minutia of work. She shouldn't be doing those things. She's a big thinker, big projects, bringing in big business. She's meeting with all these folks, she's going to all these conventions, trying to attract people to Los Banos. And she's got all of her little whiz-bang things that she takes with her, backscratcher and all that stuff. They're trying to attract people to come to Los Banos. It works. We got, it works.
Los Banos has your back.
Yeah, there you go.
That's a good one, yeah.
And so this administrative coordinator is a new body in her department that she's going to delegate a portion of her duties to so that she can focus on more of what she needs to get accomplished. Same thing with the police staff. There's a certain amount of things that our code enforcement staff can do, for example, with homeless. They can't take enforcement action with homeless and we need more staffing to do those types of things. And so this supervisor and the officers allow them to do that. Maintenance worker for the general fund, the battalion chiefs, these two guys are up at night and they're controlling shifts and they're managing shifts and trying to make sure that everyone stays safe. They need some time off so that they can do things that are more project-based to move their fire department forward. And so on and on down the road, as we look at some of these positions, another big one is the city engineer. It's time to split out the department head from, I'm sorry, the public works director and the city engineer. It's time to split those jobs. Because we know, and we hear it every day from Joe especially, and we've seen it before that, the public works director has a lot of projects going on every day, just running the day-to-day operations of keeping the water running, the sewer flowing, all those things going. Not to mention all the things that Stacy needs in regards to engineering. That's a special certificated, educated individual with a degree just to do engineering. They have a stamp. Joe, me, none of us here can do any of that stuff. And so we always relied on the public works director slash city engineer and they were always splitting their time. And that makes them less effective. So now we're going to split that out. We hope that we get a public works director that is also a city, also an engineer. But we're going to divide that up as well and hopefully have a second engineer so that we can be more productive, more efficient with the things that we do. And we're not all waiting around for maybe a consultant or somebody else to, to help us do the work because our public works director's out on a, out on a project right now trying to maintain the day-to-day operations. And so this is just the first step in the process of starting to expand our wings a little bit so that we allow our staff to do what we hire them to do and really execute and provide services to this community. We preach about it all the time. We're here to provide service to the community. And so this is the first step in doing that. While we remain fiscally responsible to you all and the residents of this community. So I want to say thank you.
So you think with the battalion chief, that's three that are authorized, two that are funded, you think that'll be coming this year?
So I would imagine that these guys already have a plan with how they're going to hire their two battalion chiefs. So I bet a month, two months, just depends on the hiring process. As soon as this budget's approved and later this month, that they'll be, yeah, they'll start the hiring process, they'll start the recruitment process, I should say. And they can't hire people until after July 1st. But that's the same with all these positions. HR is going to be really busy with trying to catch up with all of these, these recruitments. So we can recruit, but we can't hire until after July 1st. That's okay. We need the time anyways.
And I do want to take a minute, I, I didn't, to recognize my staff. It's been two months, but without them, I wouldn't have been able to bring this and do the things that, that were, we've been able to do in these two months. And Sarah and Rosemarie, and then Brent has also been a part of the team. And so I really want to thank them for all their work in, in putting this together and, and making sure that we had a really good work product for you.
And we thank you too. I, I've been, I've seen a lot of budgets, twenty-five years worth of budgets from cities to other, other government entities. And I'm really excited about this budget, probably more than anyone I've ever seen because I see opportunity, I see growth, I see going in the right direction. I see people on the same page, thinking the same way. And I really appreciate the city council too, because they're, they're doing these three, next one, soon, another one, doing the right thing. You know, you just got to care about your community. It's easily said, but you're pulled from a lot of directions, but you have to stay focused on, on your job. So I appreciate that. Minnie, you did an excellent job on this and your staff did and all the department heads did and all their staff, because it's a lot of work. And Gary, thank you for putting it all together. So any other comments from the city council?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple.
Sure.
Again, I want to echo your consent for our staff, our city manager, to make sure that this budget was put together and the idea of making sure that we have adequate staff to give the services to our community that they're entitled to receive. And Mrs. Moreno, thank you so much to you and your staff and how clear you made this budget for me to understand. It could be very complicated. And even though I've looked at them for several years, it's, it's still complicated. I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's a living document because that means that council can come back if we see a need for something in a particular area to say, hey, look, let's find some money and do this. And certainly, I, I have a request tonight, but it's not going to be on this budget. I think futuristically, maybe another six months down the line, mid-budget. I, I think we need some more code enforcement officers in our community. And from the budget, I think Chief or Mrs. Moreno, it looks like we have four on the books. Is, is that correct? We have four? And then one attendant at the animal shelter. Okay, so on the books here, we have, on the, we have four, five. We have two, we have four code enforcement officers and one animal shelter attendant. Yeah. And it's broken, I mean, it's broken up into two different sections that I saw here. So actually, how many code enforcement officers do we have?
The total code enforcement is four.
Okay.
Plus two code enforcement, and two shelter.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll figure it out. And also, I wanted to ask on page sixteen of the general fund operation, it, it shows that there's some capital outlay for the Pioneer Ortigalita at five point three million. Is, was there any fund matching from MCAG for that or is that, are we doing all of this?
Yes, Sarah Roscoe, one of our accountant, accountant twos?
She's my rock star CIP. So, yes, MCAG is, is helping with this Pioneer project. However, the funding that's allocated for that is for like right-of-way acquisitions, environmental studies, things of that sort. So the money that you're seeing, that five point four, is actually for the construction of the intersection. So MCAG won't have a match for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's see if there was anything else. If it is, I won't, I won't take up. I thought you were going to say something to me, Chief. So very good budget. I'm glad we're healthy. That's always good to, to have that ease that you're not in a crunch. So often I hear there's a site, a couple of sites that I So often, I hear, there's a site, a couple of sites that I get. One is called California City News Update, and practically every day I read something about another city that's in a major deficit in their budget. So it makes me feel really good that our staff worked so hard to make sure that we're in the black with our budget and we have money set aside that if we end up in a situation, God forbid a recession, that we can still provide services to our community. So that's important. And again, thank you all so much for what you've done. Thank you, Mayor.
So, yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, thank you, many and staff, and Brent, of course. Brent, yeah, I never forget you, Brent. You made an impact on me first day I came about spending money, make sure you've got enough money before you do anything. And I think about it all the time, the decisions we take. You know, but it's good, it's good to see what, you know, what we've got going on, and we're adding a lot of bodies. And, you know, I know it's not all battalion chiefs that, you know, we did authorize all three, but of course it still comes down to the funding and stuff like that. But the plan is still to get there, as we talked about, and the other things that we discussed as well, you know, and all the other needs for fire as well. But what, what I like, the mayor said earlier is, you know, we've got the money and we need to spend it, we're providing services. But with that said, you know, I definitely agree, we've got to spend the money, but be smart about it. We're using, you know, people's tax dollars, we're sitting here approving measures to continue and stuff. So we've just got to make sure we're smart with how we're spending the money. I'm not saying we haven't been, I'm just saying we just always, never lose focus in that. But yeah, no, it's a good job, good job to you all. Thank you.
Thank you for, for, all the presentations tonight are great. It's the, I'm really happy to be on, on the council right now because it's just, it's everything that I hoped it would be, like, having a city that has, has money to be able to spend on the services like this, having the transparency, the meetings with the, with the, all, all of the citizens, it's just really, it's fantastic. I really appreciate the effort and all of your input.
Okay, with that, we will move on. Thank you, everybody. We'll be bringing this back at our next meeting, which is the 18th, and that's when we'll actually take a vote on this budget with another public hearing. So we'll go to our city department reports, and let's go ahead and start with our fire chief, Paul Wall.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff, and public. Fire department's real thankful for what we were able to get, our, we're pushing forward in the budgets. I appreciate council for, for having that dialogue with us and the interim city manager having dialogue with us in regards to these positions. So, thank you. And always with, with finance staff, thank you. And I know I can be difficult at times, but I appreciate all the work that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Economics Development Director, and let's see, our planner, on her way on vacation. I know you'll be working on the growth management system while you're on vacation, right?
Absolutely. Yes, I will be available. You know, you can always contact me regardless of what time zone I'm in.
We'll be alone.
So, the first item is, thank you, yes, we need to do that, is, I just want to let everyone know that the modular unit will be removed. It is anticipated it will start June 16th, and it will be completed on June 20th, and then the parking lot will be turned back into its original state by the Public Works Department. We're coordinating with the Public Works Department, so we'll have staff parking and customer parking in the parking lot. I also want to highlight that the Downtown Association will have their Fourth of July celebration on June 28th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. They are holding weekly farmers markets every Friday. It just started, last Friday was their first one, and it's anticipated to go through October. I also want to highlight that we will be having a community workshop on homelessness tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at the police department in the community room. And one last item I would like to point out is we do have, the draft point-in-time count has been released by the Merced County and City Continuum of Care, and this was for the point-in-time count for 2025. And Los Banos unsheltered persons count for 2025 was 86 people, which in 2024 was 121 people. So we see that as a difference of 35 with a down percentage of 28.9%, which is amazing. You know, some of the reasons for that reduction are that our housing division, having a housing division first off, and thank you to the council for the foresight and, and the priority in, in making sure that we have a housing division within our community. But it's having the housing division permanently house 20 people, and that's been since March of 2023. And that, also, we've refined the methodology now that we have a housing division, and how that's done, the point-in-time count is done with the continuum of care and following HUD's rules and identifying that that is an actual person. You have to see the person before you can survey them, and following all of those HUD rules, I think have really refined that point-in-time count. Our Housing Program Manager, and I'm going to just read some notes that she's provided to me as well, it's just an update on what's going on with our unhoused community. A census map of all of our unhoused people in Los Banos has been created with the housing division and code enforcement. Eighty-five people are unsheltered, 20 people are in bridge homes. Approximately 15 people are all ready for One Tree, that is our permanent supportive housing of 58 units. So we have 15 people all ready, ready today to move in as soon as the units are built, and more to follow. There are about three people in the bridge homes right now who are ready for One Tree, and that means three people would come from the encampment. So then they would move, those folks that are in the bridge homes would be moved over to the permanent supportive housing, and then that makes room for folks in the encampment to be within the bridge homes, lowering the number to 82. Of the 82 people, the housing division and the community partners have case management plans for each person, including social security disability applications, care, court petitions, Section 8 vouchers, and employment readiness. And the census maps are updated weekly. So our housing division with our code enforcement are creating their own census. They have their own census that happens on a weekly basis with a roster. We know and identify who is there within our encampment and really actually unhoused within our entire community. And it's due to the fabulous work that our team does. Our Housing Program Manager, Kristi McCammon, and our homeless outreach coordinator, Jennifer Loa, it's relentless, every single day, making progress with our unhoused community, and we're seeing the benefits of it now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Finance Director Moreno.
So I spoke about it a little bit in my presentations, but we are going to be starting a wonderful campaign to buy local and to buy online. I think there, we need to provide more information about that. We have a leakage rate of 70% that could be staying here in Los Banos. So we have a big, a big challenge in front of us that we need to educate the community that if they buy online and it gets delivered here, those tax dollars come here, and that if they buy local, that those tax dollars stay here. And so, we're also going to be looking at putting out some videos with all of you and motivating our community to, to spend those tax dollars in Los Banos, and being able to provide even more services to the community and keeping some of those tax dollars here, and how much that makes a difference, that, that we keep those tax dollars here. So more to come, and looking for all the areas where we can improve on, on making Los Banos much better.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation Director, interim Public Works Director, interim Engineer, Broom, oh, Newlywed, yes, already, all that.
Joe. All right. Take it away, Joe. Yes, thank you. I'm supporting Public Works during the transition. Definitely want to give a big thank you to the Public Works staff. We have a pretty amazing staff. And, you know, there's, I've still discovering things, but there's like over 100 projects that we've been going over, and they touch everybody, and, and it's just been great catching up with them. In addition, it's been very, I've been very grateful to have help from all of our departments across the board. I mean, Lucy on personnel, or Mr. Vaughn with contracts, everybody here with that. So it's been very, very, very helpful as we've tried to tackle the transition. I mean, my focus is definitely trying to get projects moving, because we have this great budget to, to implement as well. But really, you know, we've had our, our share of struggles in Public Works, and we want to make sure that we're handing that baton off to the next person as best as we can. And, you know, I've, I've been in Public Works before, spent about four or five years in Public Works with Parks and Rec. So, yeah, very grateful to everybody's help and, yeah, might be a little bit manic at times, but we'll do our, our best here. Also, just wanted to update, so the parks projects, you'll see some concrete forming at Shaughnessy Park, which is exciting. Ag Sports Complex with the pickleball and the landscape is underway. You'll see the new sod at the north side, they did a little driveway, I think today and yesterday. The south side turf is coming before the next council meeting. Pickleball, you can kind of see the shape of it as well. And last, I know Chief Reyna is going to talk about it, but I really wanted to give a huge, 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 huge thank you to the, those that worked on the encampment today and Monday, as well as tomorrow. I was out there today. Everybody from every maintenance employee to Chief Reyna was sweating bullets on their forehead, covered in dirt, working all day, both days working past their, their scheduled shift. Yeah, if you haven't got a chance to drive by, please do. They've done great work. Again, I'll let Chief Reyna talk more about it, but I just, it's very impressive what they did and the cooperation that was involved.
Great. One last thing about the lights on the canal. Do you have any idea when that might happen?
Yeah, so as you remember, there was a, an item that we were able to get a $125,000 grant for canal trail solar lighting from the San Joaquin River Exchange. We are in process of drafting up the RFP process for that. I can't get that out until, of course, this budget's approved, but we're hoping to get that out for the summer and then install those in the fall, maybe early winter depending on procurement of those poles, just that timeframe.
And those will be solar, correct?
Yes, there'll be solar poles along there. So we, we do have most of the, the specs and everything that we're looking for together. Thankfully, council had previously approved the CCID extensions.
Okay, I just had a few questions about timing.
Absolutely, and always direct them to me as well.
Yeah, thank you. And our, let's see, our city clerk, HR director, you have anything to report on trying to find all these people, Lucy?
We're going to be busy. HR will be busy. No, I haven't.
Okay, that's good. And Chief, Chief Reyna, you've been a busy boy.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As Joe mentioned, providing an update on G Street. As you know, staff has been out there all week. We started Friday, providing notice. The housing division was out there as well, providing notice, offering services. They have a formerly homeless, homeless ambassador that was actually out there, knows everyone that was providing information. All weekend, we provided notice, we provided storage totes to help them get started. Monday, 6:00 a.m., about 25 staff members from Public Works, police, code enforcement, met at the police station for an operational briefing. Right out to the encampment, we started on Pad 2, which is the east encampment closest to the police station. We worked all day until about 5:00 o'clock, addressing Pad 2. Today, started 6:00 a.m., about 25 of us, police, public works, code enforcement, till about 6:00 o'clock. And all in all, we removed about 60 tons of trash and soiled everything, and broken things, and just everything in the middle. And so we, about 60 tons, cleaned the sites, fire department was out there, we appreciate them, they helped us clean the site, got it all ready, and we replaced everything with about 68 10-by-10 all-season tents. Those that were out there were very thankful for what we did for them. We're not done, so we will be back to finish to, mid-tomorrow morning. We just ran out of time and space and time, and then we will be finishing on Friday. So this was all part of a one-week effort. Our goal, in discussion with the city manager, was that we wanted to completely transform G Street. We heard you loud and clear, we hear the public loud and clear, and we appreciate the thumbs up and the support to give us what we need so that we can actually do this. And so we wanted to get this done in one week. We're not done, we'll be back Thursday and Friday. A huge shout-out to Public Works, those are some hard-working people. And so they are really good at what they do, the fire department, police, code enforcement. I was very impressed. I did stay out there with them, but they were just unbelievable. So we'll be back out there. This is part of a long-term effort. We have been spending a lot of time out there. We are spending even more time out there enforcing the new rules and regulations. We've been very clear about them. We're spending more time, especially in the evening, monitoring the sites. Staff have very clear direction. We are going to be bringing in technology to help us monitor the evening hours, which is when all the illegal dumping goes on, the fires, the construction, the crimes. So we're going to be bringing in some technology to help us with that, so that we can relieve some more staff. The staffing that you are going to be considering at the police department will be very instrumental in keeping this camp going and addressing these concerns. And then, once we get everything under control, we can transition them to other things like traffic and other things that are a priority. Why we are doing this, our goal is we're really going to try to hold this thing together with what we have for six, 12 months to give you all time to come up with perhaps other additional options that I know the staff are working on, to give you more options until we can eventually get to One Tree, because I know that's a way off. And so we are working on that. Again, thanks to Public Works, fire, code enforcement, police, thanks to the council. We really appreciate the consideration, and to our city manager also. So we'll be back, back out there Thursday, mid-morning, Friday. If you haven't had a chance, I encourage you, go by, take a look. Remember, we're not done, there's still a bunch of stuff out there we just didn't have space for. So we're going to get it all, we're going to get it cleaned up. I think it looks, I was going to say a million times better, but we'll say a thousand times better. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and the council.
Before he leaves, Chief, could you expound a little bit on what the residents out there have to follow in order to stay in the encampment?
Sure. So the, trying to keep things simple. And so, I'm going to say it like this, if you're not allowed to have a mattress and broken bikes in front of your yard, neither are they. So they're going to be required to keep the stuff inside their tents, and we're going to, we're, those are essentially what the rules say. No unlawful building, can't build, I can't build an unlawful structure in my front yard, neither can they. And so, we're trying to encourage them to follow these rules, and that is why we are spending so much time out there. So for example, since we started this, the staff have been providing updates to myself and the commanders, hour for hour, on what they are doing in the evening. And obviously, emergency calls are the priority. But the goal is to have a major presence out there to enforce these rules so that everything that we did to remove and stand up what is on G Street is going to stay as long as we can keep it, and that's the goal. And so essentially is just to maintain the rules, to keep it clean, and in addition, those who are found to be out there peddling drugs or engaging in other unlawful activities, we will find someplace else they will not be allowed to stay out there.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? So, you know, it's a, as you heard from Stacy, all the HUD, what do you call them, HUD certificates, vouchers, yeah, the HUD voucher, there's so many moving parts to this. And then the, the governor comes out about him three weeks ago and says he wants to close all the encampments, but he doesn't change any of the rules. So he says that out loud without changing rules, it doesn't help cities at all. And so, I really appreciate staff, Chief, appreciate your ideas, and Gary, it was time. Everybody... Everybody has to play by the rules, law and order has to be there, everything has to be clean, it's, it's over, it's done with, it has to be taken care of. Our chief will make sure it is taken care of, and then we will, as a council, decide. You can't move someone from a tent to a permanent house. It just is not going to work. You have to have transition housing to move them to. So we're looking at, and that's what the chief referred to, we're looking at something down the road to move them from the tents, to transition housing, to the HUD vouchers, which is federally funded for their housing. That's how that, all that works. So to get it off the city's dime, onto the federal dime. And plus, with all this, we're trying to lower the numbers completely. As you saw, we've been pretty successful in the last six, seven, eight months. So there's a lot more to come, but it was time, and I'm glad it's taking place, and, and I know the community's going to love it, what I've seen so far. So with that, let's see, I think that's it. We'll go to Gary with the city manager report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Mayor of the Council. I'll just keep heaping that praise on all of the Wonder Women over there that Joe referred to them as, our finance staff, and Martha over at Public Works, and all the men and women that, that were out at the encampment today, working. It was hot today, it was hot yesterday. I would have preferred to have been out there with them, but duty calls to be in this air-conditioned room all day and meetings, so I couldn't be out there with them, but I, I would have preferred to have been out there with them. But it was a momentous seismic shift in what we're doing out there, and I just want to thank the staff for, for the compassion that they had, because I'm going to tell you that it's, we want to be as compassionate as we can while we conduct this type of business, because it's not easy. This is these people's lives out there, and what I've seen with Ray and the staff that did the job, and the people that help them, the housing division, everybody's trying to be as respectful as we can, but it's all a balance, right? It's a balance of their rights versus your rights to live in a vibrant, beautiful neighborhood, community. And so we actually had this plan, I'm going to, Ray and I were talking about it weeks before the poor young lady got injured out at the encampment during one of the cleanups. But we had to pause the plan because of that. I do want to say that the young lady has been released from the hospital, she's at a home in Merced recovering, sounds like she's going to be okay, thankfully. That was a, that was a tough few days to get through with the city staff, with the men and women that were out there working, but we all stuck together and we got through it, so we're better for it. And it's going to be all effort, and Ray and I have talked about it, it's, it's on us to make sure that whatever we do here today sticks. So we, we understand that responsibility, and we don't take it lightly. Joe, appreciate your work doing the public work stuff, you've really stepped up. I, I feel bad, he'll email me at 10 o'clock at night on the weekends, and so just out of obligation, I find weird times that I wake up in the middle of the morning, so he thinks that I'm working hard too, and I'll just send him a reply at like 3:00 in the morning for no reason, but I just got to pretend like I'm keeping up with him. So I appreciate that, Joe, many great presentation. A couple of things that we're going to bring forward, we talked a little bit about the bottle dump. That is an old landfill that's out by the Ag Sports Complex, which Joe and his team are remodeling now, the Ag Sports Complex. So we've had this bottle dump on the radar to get what they call closed with the state. There's two different ways we can close it. We can either cap it, where we put a solid, non-permeable structure on top, so that the water doesn't penetrate to all the toxins, I guess if you will, it's, it's an old trash landfill. And so the state regulations require us to close that in either in this capping process or a, what's called a clean closure, where we take five feet of dirt or something along those lines in the, in the hot areas of the, of the landfill out there, and we take it out to Billy Wright Road where it's going to be stored forever. That will be coming hopefully in July. Joe, we're working on that, we met with some staff from our consultants, this has been a project that's been on the books since 2014, 2004. It's been, yeah, it's been a long time, and we're, we're going to tackle it, we're going to get it done, because it needs to, preferably, the other way is a clean closure, you get rid of all the dirt, and you can use it for just about anything, minus a school, because they have really high standards for which they operate under. You can use that land to do a lot of different things. And so you will be seeing that, because we're going to want you to give us your input on clean closure or cap, there's different dollar amounts involved, I'll just break it to you gently here, the cap is about $6 million, the clean closure is going to be about $15 million as we know it, but we think there's some wiggle room there. And so finance staff is going to figure out a finance plan, we're going to bring it to you at the second meeting in July, and then our consultants are going to go back to the water board that's in control of this process. We're going to apply for a, either a clean closure or a cap, and we're moving that ball down the, down the field, because we've got to get it done. It's been on the, I remember in years past, sitting in the chair, we, we've had the same conversations, but we've got the team to do it now, and we're going to do that. Also in July, we're going to bring up, hopefully, I think the second meeting of July, you talked earlier about the ability to have a mobile vending park. We have a potential solution for you that we'll bring to you in July, hopefully, and that has to do with our civic center master plan. That includes the old police department facility and the two buildings that are just west of it. That could totally be turned into a park, depending upon how you all see our future, and we'll bring you some ideas for that, to go along with what we're going to do across the street with the annex building, which is the, I don't know, I can't remember. Yes, that's what I meant to say. So we're going to bring all that for you, back to you after our public workshop to get the public's input. We're going to let them tell us what they want to see out of a downtown plan in regards to what we could do potentially with those buildings that are over there. Maybe it's a park, where we've got some green space and we've got some parking space where we could, we could provide a cool area for mobile vendors, just as an option. So you'll see that coming this way. I think that's it, I'll stop talking. I appreciate it, thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Gary. That, the sports ag complex, that old bottle dump, just to let, bring some perspective, about 25 years ago, there was a dump on the other side of 165 that had the same contamination. Most of it's concrete, rebarbed, I don't know if there's any, anything else too much more in it like chemicals and stuff, but we will find that out. And it's 55 acres by the Ag Sports Complex, so it's a big piece of property, that's why it's so much money. Okay, with this, we'll go to our council member, Evan Sanders, District Two.
So you might be shocked to hear that there's a lot of disinformation about what's going on with the homeless encampment online. I was shocked to see what was going on when I looked on Facebook, Instagram. So I would really suggest that everybody go to the meeting tomorrow, or it's going to be online, right? Will we broadcast? No? Okay, well then I'd really suggest you go to it, because you'll be able to get through all the disinformation. And the disinformation is, is pretty wild, the stuff that you see in Facebook threads, and mostly Facebook is what I look at, probably Next or two. I think we're going to talk a lot about how we get from where we're at now, which is way better than it was last week, thanks to Ray and Public Works, everybody else for that, it looks way better now. But how we get from where we are now to when One Tree opens, which is legitimately a couple of years away still, so it's kind of a long time. So there's going to be probably a lot of information there. So, yeah, I, I would, I would suggest that you, you go to that meeting and pay attention to what's happening. Tonight's meeting was, was great, it was a really good example of what transparent and community-driven local government should look like from my perspective. We're talking about food vendor policies, evaluating how we fund maintenance of the neighborhoods that we live in, and making sure that all public safety is paid for and that the services the city offers to, to everybody that lives here are funded for the next year. This isn't, it's not just numbers, it's, it reflects what the values of this council and what we want to make sure that the city has for services. And I'm really proud to be part of the council that puts the residents first. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. District Three, Marcus Chavez, Councilman.
All right, so I want to start with, I want to apologize for missing last, you know, last council meeting, I had our commitments that I could not change, but apologize for that. I do take the seat seriously, so I do want to say that first and foremost. Now I want to talk about the encampment, just leave off, or follow up where Evan was talking about. You know, I was out there yesterday, I was out there today. Like I tell you, I was really impressed with what I saw, even from yesterday to today, I was like, damn, they, they did all that already, you know, so, you know, definitely Chief Reyna, you know, I was out there with Officer Mendez and Hogan and Commander Drum and, and, you know, Commander Melden, they were moving out there, and the Public Works guys, they're, those guys, there was an army out there today. They were out there yesterday, but I saw a whole string of trucks, and right away yesterday, I started getting a lot of people just, you know, saying, hey, you know, what are you guys doing, it's looking really good. Got a lot of positive feedback, you know? Look, it's not going to be perfect, it, it's a tough thing to, to change, to, to fix, it's not that easy. You know, people can criticize and, and say, well, you guys should do this or should do that. You know, it's, it's not easy, and I got to give you guys a lot of credit, Gary, for what you guys have done, you guys have done a lot. I mean, it's been, all I've heard is nothing but really good things, and it's moving in the right direction, so I just, again, hats off to what we're accomplishing there. When I move over to real quick, you know, the food vendors, you know, I know there's a lot of discussion going on with that, I'm, I'm glad to hear, you know, we're going to start making some progress with that, with some temporary, you know, solutions for now, and it is temporary. Ms. Lewis, it's not for sure, so it's just temporary for now, it won't be, don't worry, Gary will make sure it's temporary. But, you know, got to see more action and less talking, and that's what I like, that this council likes to do more than just say, say, say. We can only go so fast due to government, but we're trying our best to, to, you know, speed things along in a lot of areas. And now I want to change over to the last thing I want to talk about. I want to, I want to, you know, for you, Chief Reyna and Chief Twala, you know, I want to let you guys know, you know, I want to come in, Ms. Lewis, we went to One Voice in Washington, let me tell you, she was something else, man, she was trying to get you guys funding like there's no tomorrow. She was vicious, boy, and she was fighting for you guys, and I got to tell you, damn, she was like really in there. So, Ms. Lewis, I wanted them to know that, because that was, I saw that, I was like, wow, you know? I mean, I went there, I was doing something different, I was on a different strike team, trying to get funding and grant money for, you know, our airport, and trying to get our roads fixed out in the rural areas, and I know that's not in-city limits, but, you know, that stuff helps our economy, you know, because we are ag-based, and that's what it was about. So anyways, that's, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and let's continue forward how we're moving. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Mayor Protem, Deborah Lewis, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd, I'd like to give another shout out to our Los Banos High School marching band and guard, like the mayor. I, I was in, I wasn't in the marching band, but in high school, I was the drill team colonel. So when that drum line starts going, it's like, you know, it runs in your blood, and even today, when I hear a drum line going, it's like, you know, in my mind, I still think I could do that kind of stuff. So I, I'm really proud of, of our youth here in Los Banos, especially that we keep the arts going in music, and even at Creekside Junior High School, they have an excellent band over there. So I, I just give a lot of shout out to our kids for having that interest and wanting to be in the arts here in Los Banos. I'm going to give a shout out and a congratulations to Superintendent Dr. Mark Marshall, who has accepted a new position with Central Unified School District in Fresno. He's had some great accomplishments here in Los Banos. I'm sure he's going to do a great job in Fresno, they, they need help there, but, and I hate to see him go, because I, I'm sure he had a lot more things that he wanted to accomplish in Los Banos, but he's done an excellent job, and I, I want to congratulate him publicly for the, for the work he's done here in the school district. We, we've had some communications from one of our residents about bike lanes here, especially on Pacheco, I'm glad that we made the correction about the grates on the road, but Caltrans is going to be redoing, a revamping of Pacheco Highway, repaving it all the way from the beginning of town, I think just a little bit south of, well, probably, is it going to be all the way to Five?
Volta.
Volta Road? Okay. So they will probably be including bike lanes in that, and I would encourage anyone who is interested in that to make sure that they come to those meetings and express their concerns, because Pacheco Highway is a, a state highway, and they have total jurisdiction over that. We do have futuristically plans for circulation and bike routes throughout the city of Los Banos, not every road will have one, but there will be a circulation process. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly when that's in the plan, but I'm, I'm sure it's going to be coming up soon here. The encampment, I think everything has been said that needs to be said, our staff has done an absolute wonderful job. The tents, I was out there day one, and just sitting in my car for a couple hours and watching, it, it's amazing how quickly information gets out through the internet. There was a parade of people just driving by, looking at what was going on and what our staff was doing, and it's progressed to where it is now. I will be making a trip out there tomorrow, I, I saw online from the pictures that our city manager sent us, the progress with the second station of, of encampments that has been erected. So to our staff, I, I can't thank you enough. Certainly, it's not going to make everybody happy in our community, but it's a far cry better than what we had before, and I, and I appreciate the fact that we're not just putting the tents there, but we have standards for people who are going to live there, just as we have standards for people who live in our communities. It, it should not be neglected just because you're homeless. So thank you again to our city manager and to all of the staff who are involved in this project to make it move forward and be successful. And that's my report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have for the, I always said earlier, one of the candidates came forward, for the election on August 26th, we will be trying to schedule with the Women's League of Voters a forum with the two candidates, two young girls, which is a good sign that we're getting more youth involved in our government. So that'll be coming, more, more to that will come in the future. At MCAG, they just gave out a, which does, MCAG, Merced County Association of Governments, as has been talked about a little bit tonight, most of the monies from the state for roads come through that and then distributed to the cities and the county. That route that Mayor Protem Lewis talked about, it starts basically at Santa Fe Grade and goes to Volta, it's a tw- almost $30 million project to repave, and boy, is it needed, repave Highway 152 all the way through town. It's projected to be completed on October 26th, so we got a little over a year of that. They're going to start paving on 165 at Wilson Road, headed north towards 140, that's, that's going to start if it hasn't already started. It's supposed to be completed, all that's supposed to be paved, so look out if you're driving that way, it's tomato season. And that's supposed to be completed September of this year. So those are two big road projects, and of course, the, the Caltrans has pretty much come to the conclusion that at Volta Road, they want a roundabout. Couple meetings ago, they discussed that's a $16.2 million roundabout. Everything costs so much money these days, unbelievable. I've talked a lot already, so I'm going to call it quits, but I want to thank Brent Hume for keeping this city afloat for the last couple of years, done an excellent job, you worked with me, with the Designing and Land Authority too, and you've done an excellent job for the city, I want to thank you very much, you know, for everything you've done. And more to come, more to come, yeah, can't forget about you. With that, it was a good meeting, it's a good budget, I think why everybody doesn't want to get involved with the city in a commission. Bring yourself forward, I, what do we have, just one position left, do you? Do you remember, Lucy? Four, there is four positions? Yeah, just one and one. So we'll be, hopefully you can get, we'll, we've just advertised that, maybe we'll do it again. So anyway, yeah, so a couple, we want those all filled up, they filled up pretty fast, the other commissions. So we want everybody's input, we need your voice, you know? You don't have to agree with us, we need to hear it. Good, mad, we don't get better if everybody just says, you're doing a great job. That doesn't make things better, we need to hear the other side too. Actually, we do hear the other side a lot, I think, yeah. So, so anyway, with that, appreciate everybody's involvement, appreciate staff, and this meeting's adjourned.